Good evening, everyone. We're gonna open up the Tuesday, July tenth, seven o'clock Cohasset Board of Selectment meeting. We are present here at the town hall. We'll do a call, a call to order rule call, starting with Steve.
Steve Domer here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Walter here.
Kevin McGrath here.
And if everybody would like to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, next on the agenda is a public comment for any items that are not on our agenda. Is anybody here for public comment? Great, so, um, the, the next thing on the agenda is, is a public hearing to discuss the proposed change of manager, A and S Restaurants LLC, DBA Atlantica. It's posted for seven ten. Jim, do you think we should wait till seven ten?
I think we should wait till seven ten.
And perhaps there's something else on the agenda we can, we can take up, maybe the special municipal employee discussion?
Sure.
Would you be?
Well, I got Jim right here anyway, so I don't have to say anything.
Ready, so.
Can I make a note, can we change the agenda and place the special municipal employee item on the agenda to the present time?
Is there, is there, is a second? Have all those in favor?
The second. Hi. Hi.
Okay, so we are gonna move the eight thirty special municipal employee agenda item up, and we'll talk about it. It's in our pack, we had it in our packet the last two weeks, um, and I think we just need some, we, we need some comfort and clarification on what, what it exactly does. We had a request from, um, one of the committees that doesn't have the status currently. Just because a couple of applicants for an open position on that committee happened to be practice law in the general vicinity of Cohasset, so they wanted to, you know, um, make sure they did everything they could not to have an appearance of conflict, so, but we're all kind of, uh, new at this. Uh, we've never made that kind of an appointment, so any insight you and or Chris can give us is much appreciated. I know we're putting you kind of on the spot.
Yeah, well, that's okay. I'm just gonna get a copy of chapter two sixty-eight A so I can read the, necessarily read to you the definition of special municipal employee.
Those are all too good there.
Yeah, they, yeah, this, the definition hasn't been, uh, changed. So some of these part of this book is upside down.
It's just been written in farce. That's actually very funny.
Well, if you flip it the other way, it's Spanish.
You have to go back the other way.
Just try to be a challenge for me.
That's actually very funny.
So, and then just sort of the, more importantly than the law, which is obviously important, but just sort of the practical application of it.
Right, uh, basically, you wanna say something?
No, I got ten minutes to go.
So, um, in, in, in some instances, especially, whether you're a municipal employee or a special municipal employee, you're covered by state ethics laws and all kinds of conflict of interest law. Uh, and if you were a regular employee, those are pretty broad, and they require all kinds of advanced notices for a variety of things. Special municipal employees, like for example, Jim has, has been retained as a special municipal employee as council because it'll, it limits the automatic conflicts because you're only being, you're only, you're only employee for a very, for a more limited perspective. It's like, I'm a full-time staffer, you couldn't make me a special municipal employee. Someone who's a part-time member of a volunteer committee, um, it'll, it, it doesn't make every possible interaction they or their family has. Like, for example, say they have a, they're on the zoning board and they're, um, it's a kid who works in the rectory. It's not a, it's not an automatic internal type of conflict, the same way it would be. Um, and you don't have to get, or you still can't, you know, self-deal, or you can't do kind of things, but it, it, it makes it use, it, 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 it doesn't affect their businesses in the same way. With the understanding that it's only given to people who have a very limited window of interaction, then it misses power. Um, you know, we wouldn't go a full-time person or somebody of a senior policy, um, it, but you would do it for someone who's a, you know, someone on a part-time. It's often done for people who are on part-time boards and committees, and some, that's already happened for some reason historically, some committees in town, probably because somebody asked to have been appointed in that, in that, uh, I think it's even some elected officials on it there, are there not, who are automatic as special municipal employees?
Not, not automatically. Uh, well, members of a redevelopment authority by statute are considered special municipal employees. But as, as Chris says, the conflict of interest law is applicable to all employees, whether you are a regular municipal employee or a special municipal employee, but the law is, uh, less restrictive in certain respects for positions that have been designated as special municipal employee positions. The theory being that those folks have, as Chris said, limited involvement, they're not generally full-time employees of the town. Uh, that they are on part-time boards, that type of, of thing. And under the conflict of interest law, uh, the Board of Selectmen can designate positions, not the individuals, but the positions, uh, as being a special municipal employee position, and it has to fall within three, uh, criteria. Uh, it has to be, uh, fortunately, do we have, we find section one okay. Uh, for a special municipal employee, a municipal employee who, who is not a mayor, a member of a board of aldermen, a member of, of Board of Selectmen with a population of, uh, above a ten thousand, uh, 'cause in some of the small hill towns, for example, you know, the populations are very small, and selectmen there may serve multiple positions. This often comes up when someone who's a municipal employee, i.e. a member of a board or a commission, may also be a town employee. Uh, because the law regulates municipal employees having financial interests, for example, in contracts. So, uh, I, I've seen this happen, uh, where, uh, a, a teacher, for example, may, uh, who was a full-time employee, may, uh, serve on a board in which there is a stipend, or may, uh, provide swimming lessons for a park and recreation program. And that's considered a separate contract because it's with a separate department, not with a school department. So that, in order to be designated a special municipal employee, the, uh, position, I'm just gonna put the cute parts here. Employee who holds equivalent, okay, provided, however, no municipal employee shall be designated as a special municipal employee. In other words, municipal, anyone who's on a town board, committee, elected, appointed, paid, unpaid, volunteer, or whatever, is considered a municipal employee under the conflict of interest law and is subject to the conflict of interest law. You can designate certain municipal employees as special municipal employees, provided that they occupy a position for which no con- one of three different criteria has to be applicable. They occupy a position for which no compensation is provided, or which by its classification in the municipal agency, uh, or by terms of contract or conditions of employment permits personal or private employment during normal working hours, or unless the person does not in fact earn compensation as a municipal employee for an aggregate of more than eight hundred hours during the preceding three hundred and sixty-five days. Um, so someone designated as a special has to fall within that category. Typically, on a lot of boards, I would, would imagine that those people served, uh, without compensation.
Right.
So that, so they would qualify right off the bat in, in that regard. It comes into play when, for example, uh, they may, uh, have a financial interest in another contract. So, for example, someone on, I'll just use, uh, conservation committee, I don't know, I assume they're unpaid.
Correct.
Uh, on the conservation committee, uh, someone there may be a town employee. So they would have, as a conservation commission member, a financial interest in a contract with the town. Let's say their employment contract. So the, the law provides mechanisms for, for the interest in their, the financial interest they have in that contract to be permitted, uh, whether they're a municipal employee or a special. And it's, if they're a special municipal employee, it's easier for them to comply with the law. So, for example, the law prohibits municipal employees who have financial interests in, in contracts, uh, unless, uh, certain exemptions apply. Uh, and two of the, um, main ones that oftentimes come in, into effect, uh, uh, a special municipal, it does not apply to a special municipal employee who does not participate in or have official responsibility for any of the activities of the contracting agency, and files with the clerk of the town a stipend making full disclosure of his interest in that and his immediate family, or to a special municipal employee who does participate in, in the, uh, activities of the contracting agency, if the Board of Selectmen here approves of the exemption of that, of that interest. So, uh, i- if someone does have an involvement with the agency that has the contract, the Board of Selectmen need to be informed of that, and they can decide whether or not that is going to affect, uh, the integrity of the services or is a concern. And many times, it, it's not. So, it's not that the, being a special municipal employee means you're not subject to the conflict law. It means you're subject less restrictively to it, excuse me, and there are exemptions that would enable you to still hold both positions.
So, i- if I could try to just.
To still that.
Right, um, try to get to the nugget of this. So, we had a request from the zoning board of appeals, because a couple of applicants for an open position on that committee are attorneys that could potentially have business, not before zoning necessarily, but before other, other committees or boards. So, for example, so they wondered whether we could, and that's my understanding in reading it on the website and, and, and from what you just said, is that, um, it, it would permit somebody to serve on a committee like zoning or whatever, and still have, be part of an entity, like a law firm, that has business with other committees in town that have contractual connections to the municipality. Is that right?
It, it's, it certainly makes it easier for them to be able to appear before other committees, not the committee that they're on.
They're on, right.
Uh, but.
And thus, that's why they're seeking this special status.
Quite often, they will wanna have that, although it's of more application when a board member, for example, may wanna bid on a contract with the town, uh, or may have an employment position with the town, um, and so they must have two contracts.
Okay.
Uh, or, or have a, as a board member, have a financial interest in another contract. If the, the lawyer, for example, was, say, providing legal services to some town board.
On the board, yeah.
Uh, not the zoning board, you know, they would be, as a Z, ZBA member, a municipal employee, having a financial interest in that contract, and they would have to fall under one of these exemptions, um, which they typically would, assuming that they don't have, you know, the same board, it's not the one that, they're not involved in the decision-making of that board.
Right.
There are some other examples of, uh.
So, this sounds like this is for someone, let's say, like a small town, where you've got someone who is.
Wearing many hats.
So, he's the town law officer, and they happen to be also running, let's say, run a cattle yard. They have a business that maybe has, uh, a law firm, for example, that may be doing a lot of work in town, both on boards and locally, but they're the law officer. Is that, is that.
Yeah, you know, the, the, the deal with the attorneys is, is a little different because there are some specific guidelines that, that deal with attorneys, but it is not uncommon for attorneys to be on zoning boards and yet still be able to appear before the conservation commission, before the Board of Assessors, before the Board of Selectmen on a licensing, um, matter.
So, to that point, 'cause this is, this is my understanding why this request came our way, um, is there any reason, um, not to? I mean, do they really need the special municipal employee status, if it's literally just, you know, kind of a legal representation thing?
It, it could.
I, I guess we've.
To some degree, you gotta look at each situation, even, and even if the, the position is a special municipal employee position, you know, the municipal employees are entitled to an opinion from the town council, which is not me.
Right.
Uh, or the State Ethics Commission as to whether or not their contract would, would create a problem under the conflict of interest law.
Right.
It is not unusual for part-time board members, uh, who may be attorneys, or may be accountants, or surveyors, for example, engineers, who may be appearing before other boards, to want that additional comfort that their position, uh, on the ZBA or the CONCOM is that of a special municipal employee.
So, so do a lot of towns have that?
In my experience, yes. I know, um, in, I've been involved with towns where we've, you know, like your annual report probably has, you know, a listing of all boards and committees and, you know, people like that, and quite often, they'll go through that and designate the members of each of these committees as special municipal employees. The, the person, if there's a conflict situation that arises, still should get a conflict of interest opinion so that they're protected, but it's easier for, for them to serve in those capacities if their position is a special municipal employee position. Doesn't mean they get employee benefits, it doesn't give them any pension, health insurance, salary rights, or, or anything like that. It's, even though it's called municipal employee, uh, it's, it's not an employee in the context of a compensated, benefited employee.
So, so it's more for flexibility of available options and roles in town.
Right.
Can Steve yield questions?
It's, I, I'm also watching the time.
Yeah, I know.
Just, if, if I may, um, I sit on the Board of Selectmen, I also have a, I don't know, a food vending company. The town wants to put on a, a shindig, and I wanna bid on it. Do I need special municipal employee status to do that?
Um, you, as a selectman, Cohasset being a population of over ten thousand, or under ten thousand.
No.
Okay. You, you would, you would need special municipal employee because as a selectman, you would have a financial interest in that contract.
Right.
There are exceptions if a contract is awarded pursuant to a bid.
No, no, I'm, I'm assuming a bid, but that's, I, you, you answered my question there. So the second one then is an attorney, uh, with land use specialty sits on the ZBA, all right, but has a client who has a matter in front of the planning board, which understandably could eventually lead to the ZBA.
If it's reasonable that it may lead eventually to the ZBA, the best advice would be for the person not, not to get involved, or, or to seek.
Legal counsel.
You know, I, I, fortunately, like you said, I wasn't aware that this was the end of the discussion tonight.
I know. Well, we talked about it last week a little bit, at the last meeting, but.
Wait, what I'm driving at with all of this is, if really the, um, the, the member of the board, the volunteer unpaid member, is divined to be using their common sense, do they need special municipal employee status? Must we bring ourselves into a discussion which, at this point, has led me to a lesser understanding than when we began? What's the purpose?
The, the purpose is so that if someone is a municipal employee, and they have, and they're on a part, you know, a part-time board type of situation.
That part of it.
And they may have a financial interest in another contract, that they can apply for and seek a, an exemption from the prohibition of a municipal employee having a financial interest in a contract made by the town.
So, in summary, I believe we don't need to grant this to this particular board. I mean, we could still potentially point somebody who's a lawyer to the ZBA without this protection, yep.
All right. So, I looked into this law, which Diane was, June, so, given actually, this is from the state law, but there are six.
You gotta turn it upside down.
Yeah, all right.
Sideways, turn it upside down, yep.
There's, uh, we need to keep in mind that there's six, uh, extra privileges that a special employee gets, and I'm gonna just give them briefly, to give them this time. But they would get the privileges of, uh, being able to represent private parties before municipal boards other than their own.
Mm-hmm.
Which they don't have now. They would be able to act as an agent for private parties and connections with a matter of interest, uh, to our city or town. Just, uh, that's, which they, as a special employee, they can do that. Thirdly, as a special municipal employee, they may have a financial interest in a contract with a department which is completely independent of the one where they work. Fourth, a special municipal employee may even have a financial interest in a contract with its own department, or with a department which has overlapping jurisdiction with its own department. Uh, fifthly, the, the special employee may hold any number of other special employee positions, provided the positions are with totally independent departments, they have multiple special employee positions. Sixthly, they can hold any number of other special employee positions, even if the department jurisdictions overlap. As you can see, you get into a lot of legal leagues where there's a lot of confusion here. We're in, we're, myself, I feel as though we're in an era, area of ethics here. Uh, we're promulgating, you know, that we want everybody to be signing the, the, and, and studying the conflict of law for us to go ahead and liberally grant another, a whole committee, uh, ongoing. Who's gonna watch all of that? And, uh, this is just too much, I don't think it's very bad public appearance for us to be sort of liberating an entire board from the conflict of interest laws in these, at least in these six matters, whereas others, it'll, it'll create a dis- an inequality that I don't think is appropriate. Another question I'd have is who's gonna monitor all this? You know, we know how that will, may go, and, um, there isn't that much of that in this town here. I looked in this back thing here, the water commissioners who were granted in ninety-four, advisory in eighty-nine. If anything, I suggest not only that we not do this, which I wouldn't be in favor of, but that we take this list and go back as the overseers of the conflict of interest and the ethics in this town, and look to see if we should take this away from these other boards, and maybe we should be reducing this. I can see, I see these in, in, in particular, uh, individuals, like Lant, Stilinski is and so forth, but, but the entire boards, like the water commission or the advisory, for thirty or forty years, I think we should relook at it, so. I wouldn't be in favor of this in case you didn't notice.
And, and I guess my practical last question, 'cause I do wanna move on, is, um, is we don't have to grant special municipal status to somebody who potentially could have business before another board that sits on ZBA. We don't have to do that.
Totally within the board's province and discretion.
Right, but we would still be able to point somebody to a committee, and then it's up to them to, you know.
Right.
They fall under the regular.
Follow the regulations, lots, exactly.
Well, they're like everybody else, and I believe everybody should be like everybody else, I think you do too, from your comments.
Right. Right, right. Absolutely.
It doesn't, just to be clear, and, and I know Kevin did mean it too broadly.
Yes. Yes.
But it does not exempt them from the conflict of interest law. They're still subject to it, they're still subject to the training, the educational requirements, they still have to get the certificate, they still have to do the test, and so forth. But if circumstances arise where they, where a conflict question, uh, comes up, if they're a special municipal employee position, it makes it easier to, to deal with that particular scenario. Nothing, and this comes up often when an issue comes up and the town council or the ethics commission gives an opinion, they would say, well, you know, if you, if your position is designated a special municipal employee position, and you file this disclosure, you know, uh, you would be able to still have that relationship. And sometimes, that's at the moment where the selectmen would decide whether to grant the positions on that board, special municipal employee status or not. So, you know, it, it can come up, uh, at, at that time. Sometimes boards like to, selectmen like to do it so that they don't have constant requests coming before them that so-and-so needs to have their position designated an SME position.
Right.
Uh, but nothing prevents you from doing it as the circumstances may arise.
All right.
If we're, if we're not to take action on this tonight, and I suggest we table the discussion for a future meeting, um, I, from my perspective, I think Kevin has, uh.
Yeah, oh.
Kevin, Kevin's hit a number of points that need greater examination.
I think this is off radar for the time being, yeah, I don't see any reason to act. Okay, so I'm gonna move along, and I apologize for the, um, the, the length of time, but we needed to wrap that up before we continue with our appointments over the next couple of weeks. Um, so I'm gonna open up, um, a public hearing. Um, the Cohasset Board of Selectmen acting, acting as liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July tenth, two thousand and eighteen, seven ten PM, or later, in the Selectmen's office, Town Hall, forty-one Highland Ave. This hearing is to consider the application of A and S Restaurants LLC, DBA Atlantica Restaurant, located at forty-four forty-six Water Street, for a change of manager. The proposed manager is Heinrich Lucens. The public is offered, to offer public input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. So, the hearing is now open, um, I would like to invite up, if there's a representative from Atlantica to come up, introduce yourself, name an address, and, um, just give us a little update.
Hi, Sasha Woodright. Uh, nice to see you all again.
Hey, Sasha.
Hi, very, so seventy-one South Main Street, very close, message.
So, um, the application was received, we got the, um, the summary sheet that all the materials, um, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong on anything, have been submitted, completed, the background check has been completed, for, um, Mr. Lucens, um, to be the, um, manager of record. I know Mr. Lucens is not here, I would like for you to just explain to us, um.
Right, so I came in, uh, about a week and a half ago, I think, to see Chris, and, uh, we, and he discussed, he made clear to me that he, they, that the board was not in favor of the person my father had wanted to appoint as manager, and therefore, we withdrew that person's name, and we put, uh, forward Henrik's name, which it seemed that Chris and the board would be in favor of, as he's done this before, and everyone knows him, and, uh, he's someone who's a professional from the business and, and does things by the book. And so, but then he had, he had a three-week vacation planned with his wife, which he couldn't, or if he couldn't, uh.
So, in my understanding was, um, and if Chris or Tracy could confirm this, that Mr. Lucens did present himself in this office.
Yes.
And explain that he was going away.
Yes.
Um, the letter, I believe, we received, um, noting that he was gonna be proposed as the manager, said that he wouldn't start until a date certain, which is.
Twenty-fourth of July.
Fourth of July. So, basically, it's for the board to have this discussion about, um, this applicant, um, application for Mr. Lucens to, um, take over the licensed role, the alcohol license at Atlantica. Um, so I'll open it up for comments.
No, I, I didn't realize Mr. Lucens wasn't gonna be here, of whom I have a favorable memory. Uh, however, as people, as us, we who are in charge of this license, obviously take that seriously too, liquor license. I'm, I'm uncomfortable issuing a license to anybody, I don't physically say before me that I can question or talk to on behalf of the community, and, uh, you haven't seen Mr. Lucens actually in several months. So anyways, I, 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 I don't know how we can proceed to grant a license to a, a human being that we don't have before us. And also too, if this is not to be effective till the twenty-fourth, we could, we could do this at our next meeting, and he'd still not lose any timing, right? He could be back on the twenty-fourth, right?
Correct, this wouldn't be through the, the, the timing, um, do, do you have any comments? I mean, I think, I, we're good on him, um, so.
I, I, I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm also concerned as well, it'd be nice to have him represent himself. He has done it before, and he's been it before, and he's before it before.
Oh, he, he's ready to do it, but, uh, but he's, he just had this vacation, which he couldn't cancel, and so.
Understood. Um, there's been several concerning, uh, problems in, in the, in the past regarding hours and what that manager is going to be responsible for. It'd be nice to physically have him here, speak to him directly, understanding what the hour is, what the responsibilities are. Reaffirm, reassess, and.
I understand that. I understand that.
Reconfirm what is necessary to obtain a license.
Steve?
Um, when I last saw Mr. Lucians, which by the way, was the end of probably the two most peaceful years we ever had with this place in San Diego. Uh, he was essentially saying, I'm sailing off into the sunset, I don't, I don't have any desire to work any further. So I'm surprised, maybe, maybe he's into miraculous turnabout of events. Uh, and with my colleagues, we'd sure like to hear from, from him why that is. And in the meantime, that gives us another fourteen days
Right.
From now. Uh, and I, so we still have questions as to who's, who's holding the license in the meantime.
Right. Well, they did submit the um former applicant as the assist, as the temporary interim manager. Um, one of the questions I have for counsel is, um, you know, let's assume Mr. Lucians presents himself at our next meeting on the twenty-fourth, and we are immediately say, okay. Um, is he allowed to then basically have, be the manager on site going forward, or, or is there like a waiting period with ABCC? Or can he kind of kick right into, uh, the thing is, we don't want any gaps, and we wanna get as professional a manager in there to manage this license ASAP six months ago.
Can you immediately administer the license?
So, you know, can we appoint him that night, and then effectively work, he, he starts taking over operations?
It, it would not be unusual for someone, especially Mr. Lucian, who has been in the business and is experienced, to be appointed, and while any necessary ABCC review is being undertaken, someone needs to act as the manager, especially where there is no manager of record right now. The license is held by the LLC, but there needs to be a, a manager.
Right.
I'm not sure to what extent the ABCC reviews or vets um the, the manager.
I see. Okay.
I can certainly find that out and, and let you all know. Um, I, I, obviously, if it's a new licensee, they do, but a new manager, uh I think they need to be informed, but I do not believe that they do m- uh much of a, of an investigation or, or background check. They rely on the local board to, to do that, because they don't require an advertised hearing. Um, so I, I think there's.
Okay.
So it was a practical matter. You could, you could immediately administer the license.
I, I believe that he could, but I can verify that with the ABCC.
I mean theoretically, he could be named interim manager, you know what I mean?
Well, no, I, I.
So he could effectively, practically administer the license.
Right, right.
Um, I, 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 I'm curious, uh Sasha, what are the hours currently?
Uh, I, I am not, I must say that I'm not very involved in the day-to-day operations at this time. I'm trying to act as an agent of change,
Hmm.
and that's easier from the outside of the business than it is from the inside of the business. So.
Do you know, I'm s- I'm, I'm sorry, I mean interrupt, I, I'm also cognizant of your time, but, but Chris, do we have anything with respect to publish hours?
Um. Yes, but it's not recent. Uh, so, I mean, to Mr. Royal Higginson's credit, he's been in regular contact. He met with uh me last week with some candidates for long-term operations of all of the properties. So there's been an ongoing dialogue, and due diligence, in fact, a group is meeting with our planning director, they're doing an onsite at the class number tomorrow to walk through and talk about operations. So they, they have engaged the board of health and others, so there, there's a, a lot more interactivity with the town in the last month, I'd say, or last three, four weeks than happened in some time, which is positive.
I'm, I'm most concerned that, you know, if we hold off until the twenty-fourth, that uh we're not we're, we're not overtly hindering an operation.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, but I'm, I'm with my, I'd like, as my colleagues have noted, uh, you know, it's it's, it's not the licensing authorities issue that we're now going on three months, right?
So, I, I've made the point as well that all the good faith, you know, and, and I appreciate all the good faith that's been brought to the table. The board, the history here is not favorable, and uh, the, the history here is, is not favorable, and um.
You can, you can run from the co-pilot seat.
Um, and the, the, and the, and the, um, so, so that these deadlines are real, these, these, and, and there needs to be accompanying the good faith, that gestures have to be actual actions and a timely manner of meeting the board's requirements, um, because there just isn't a lot of rope here.
Now, I, 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 look, I appreciate your, your, um, your color on the level of communication, and that's, that's helpful, and the fact that Mr. Lucians is the candidate is somewhat reassuring.
And the fact that he actually came in while I was away, to meet with Tracy and Chad, and inferred that all these things actually happened, it was positive, uh that, so that, so that, that did actually ha- I, I wasn't here, but, but uh, he did meet with, so uh.
But as my colleagues have pointed out, I'm, I'm not entirely comfortable appointing a licensing assent here based upon the last conversation I had with him. And I'd, I'd rather, I just need to clarify that from my own mind, so. I, I would agree with you. I, I think we'd probably extend the, uh, the hearing.
So, just continue to, 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 to two weeks from now, that's fine. That, that was, I'm sorry, go ahead, you finish.
Exactly.
Would you?
No, 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 I said, that's fine. I, I, we, this was on the agenda, it had, you had to have a public conversation about this. This all had to be talked through, so everyone knows where everyone is.
Sasha, do you think you can, you, you can ask uh Mr. Lucians to appear with you on the twenty-fourth?
Absolutely.
Well, y- well, we actually, if I may, uh.
Twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth, I have to s- oh, is the twenty-fourth the actual meeting?
We, we.
That's the actual meeting, yeah. It's two weeks from tonight.
Right.
Okay, then I have to, I have to get to him to see if that's, that was about the time he was coming back.
Yeah, I wanna, we actually have to have him here, and I ought to appoint him. I'm not, I wouldn't appoint someone I can't talk to.
Of course, yeah, of course.
So, you know, I know, we understand, just so, so that, if you can't, you need to get a hold of Chris.
I just have to make sure that it's actually the twenty-fourth, and not the twenty.
Right. As long as he be the twen- just coordinate with Chris to make sure that he's here, if we, for us to put it on the, on the agenda.
Of course.
Who, who then, may I ask, is, okay, so he's away, Mr. Lucian's away now, who is uh now the man that you're in charge of the liquor license in both these, on these locations, and?
Uh Jennifer Dean, the, the interim manager that was
Is where?
Put on the, that was put on the sheet.
Okay, she's at the Atlantica. Uh Joanne Nardo remains the license manager at the Red Line.
Right.
And Bob, I always mispronounce his name, is it Oul?
Oul.
Oul, is that the, the license?
So that all three are covered from our perspective.
There are, the other two have not changed, the other two have.
Okay, do we need to do anything else to extend this? Do we need to gain motions or anything?
Uh, should have a motion to c- to continue it, but the, while you're on, on the subject and, and somewhat to select and gama's uh comments,
Yeah, no, we.
the notice to the licensee uh also called to their attention certain provisions of the board's rules and regulations, uh such as that the licensee shall appoint one or more assistant managers capable of fulfilling the duties of the manager during any hours when the manager is not at the license premises. And that person needs to have the same qualifications as the, the manager, and the licensee is to provide the board with the name and contact information of all assistant managers. I don't know if, the idea was to sort of give them a hint that that needs to be done, and I, I don't know if, if they did that. Similarly, the schedule of the managers and all assistant managers' regular work hours shall be provided to the board in writing, and notice of any change to be given within five business days. I don't know if that was done. Uh, and there was also in the notice that was sent to them, a, a question that, um, Mr. uh Popeye's name still appears on the uh state records as a manager of the business, and they were asked to provide an explanation as to his role, and if he's no longer associated with the business, why his name still appears on the state records. I don't believe that any of that information was provided at all while Sasha was here.
If you may add to it, if they can address that, if he's able to.
I did, I did forget about those things. I, I will have to take care of that, uh, removing Neil Popeye from the, from the license. The other things I believe were addressed to, by Jennifer Dean, she has her assistants. I'm not sure exactly what their names are. She could provide that, that, that she's the lic- she's the interim manager, so she's, that's under, she's taking, signing the, the assistants.
So Sasha, so as, as representative of the LLC this evening, as you give your role, Chris.
Yes.
Uh, can we count on you uh to be certain that these items are addressed and completed?
Yes, I'll take care of that tomorrow.
And so that, so that as of the twenty-fourth, we can agree on it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
In, in fact, you know, 'cause this, 'cause we have a history here, and this is just more of things are not getting done, they're supposed to, but I think, can we, counselor, not make this manager appointment until all these things are done? I, I like to, when we make the manager appointment, I like to have the slate cleaned in terms of all these administrative things.
You, you, you can certainly, not, right now, as I understand it, you're gonna be continuing tonight's meeting
Yes.
to the, the twenty-fourth. Hopefully by that time, all the items under your regulations, particularly those that were called to their attention in this notice to the license holder, will be taken care of. They're not very difficult things to, to do, but.
That's right, so, but can we advise, um, Mr. Sasha that, you know, when it comes back on the twenty-fourth, that when, we may be inclined not to make any appointments of the local license manager, until these particular things are squared away, as well as any other infractions? Isn't that, wouldn't that be appropriate for us to do?
It, it would be very appropriate, and frankly, I would uh suggest to the board that they require this information sooner than the twenty-fourth.
Right.
So that, you know, there may be reason for the town to wanna check the suitability of any of the assistant managers, because under your regulations, which is, you know, very appropriate in the regulations, person has to possess the same qualifications as is required by the regulations, uh, or any, any particular provision of, of the law. So the board
Yep, I can see that.
Should be.
Sasha, with this items here, here, it's July tenth, can, can you produce these items here, as you're aware, you have the letter, right?
Yeah.
Uh, by the seventeenth, by next Tuesday, and you make sure that the town manager's office has that?
Absolutely.
And then Chris, would you make sure that you can confirm to us, you know, or the, give report to us whether or not these were done on the twenty-fourth?
Well, I give them to you before. Once we get them, I'll forward them to you.
As long as it is, we just gotta have somebody who does it, okay?
Yep.
You make sure it's done, and let us know if it's not, and that, um, we'll show up on the twenty-fourth and talk with Mr. Lucians, and this'll all be cleared up, we would expect, and we can move on this issue. Is that correct? And will you be here, counselor, on the twenty-fourth?
Uh, I've, I'll, I'll check, but I'm pretty sure of the, uh, what we hear on the twenty-fourth. Uh, the notice to the licensee of this, like, remind people, also made it clear that in the event that, uh, they didn't submit the necessary documentation, provide all necessary cooperation, or obtain the approval of a new manager, the bo- the board gave them notice that there would be a hearing this evening on whether the alcohol license uh should be canceled, suspended, modified, or revoked, or otherwise dealt with due to the failure to have a proper manager of record. So that would also be part of what's being continued to the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Which should underscore the importance to the licensee of having everything in line, so that the, the manager can be approved on the twenty-fourth. Otherwise, the board would have the authority to proceed with a hearing as to whether or not to suspend or take other action against the license.
Theoretically, we could do that tonight?
You, you could. They, they would give them notice.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I think, uh
No, I understand.
Probably they would give them some sense of comfort that, because Mr. Lucian was on, you know, on a, on a pre-planned vacation, uh, that the board would not be going forward
Okay.
tonight on that.
Well.
So, you know, once again, it comes down to, we don't like to waste time here, and this is another example where many of those things were given in a written document to the corporation, what we were looking for, hours of, of regulation of the liquor license. We were looking for who was available as assistant manager, asking for the hours, we're asking for the hours of the various assistant managers. That's not been given to us. Now, if he were here today, maybe we could ask him. I really, I'm really suspect that that would not be the case, because I would expect you as the representative would have all of this available for us, to give us the information, and that his presence would be almost necessary, but redundant, because all of this information should have been presented to us as it requested several weeks ago, in writing, clearly delineated, and none of it's there. Do, do you understand how, how frustrating and upset we are? I, let's, I, I'm really getting fed up.
I, I do, I understand. I, I, I do, after, after I came in the last time here, I wasn't aware that the interim manag- the, the other manager proposal was not acceptable. Then I was informed that it was unacceptable.
That's why we sent the letter.
Right, and then I was told that Heinrich would be a great choice, because everyone would be happy with that, so I contacted him. The next day, I got the, all the documents done for him the next day. And, and uh, and this, it slipped my mind. I, I apologize.
But it's fairly blunt.
It, it's very easy. It, it will be taken care of tomorrow morning, just like the other thing was taken care of the next day.
It's written on it, I guess, and. It spelled out what we're about to.
It's very easy.
It's spelled out, it's very simple.
Yeah. It, it's very simple. I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Sasha, I appreciate that. Uh, one of the things you've opened in saying is that you're, you know, you're effectively working from the outside as an agent of change, and I would humbly, uh, but forcefully point out that the change that you ought to be looking at making is in how you operate.
Well, the change.
This is, this has become the standard operating procedure.
I told, I told, as I told Chris in our private meeting, uh, my, my plan is to get a, a professional management company on board, so the catered affair does not have an issue with me saying that they're, we, we are in discussions to, to bring them on board. Nothing is signed yet, that's why they didn't come with me tonight. They're at the hotel now, but one of the owners, one of the senior managers, and two consultants who are building budgets and revenue projections, on which we're gonna ma- make our arrangement of how we cooperate together, and we're gonna become solid partners. So that's the long-term plan. In the meantime, Chris informed me that there needed to be a manager that's acceptable to the board. He told me it was Heinrich. Heinrich was easy for us, because he's an old friend. Yes, he, and he knows it's, it's temporary until the catered affair takes over, or if, if they didn't, then we take, then we, we can find someone else who's acceptable to the board.
The same, the same expectations would, would be in place regardless of whether or not it were the catered affair, uh, Four Seasons, or, you know, what was those clam chens? So, words within, I'm simply proposing to you that you take that back with you. Um, I think we're, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we probably wrapped for this evening, so that this can be a continuous.
Um.
Uh, I make a motion to, uh, leave the meeting open, or the hearing open, and extend the, uh, the, the hearing until the twenty-fourth.
You just give it to her, just to give it time, second time.
Oh.
Seven, seven ten A M P M.
Both, both, both hearings are prescribed under the notice on the new manager, and in default, uh, on whether some action should be taken against the license.
One oh minute. Uh oh, man, in addition, action taken on the license, do we reissue it, or put on recommendations or instructions?
So it'll be two hearings?
Two hearings. These are second combos.
Okay, um, hey, okay, and, um, do we do a roll call on this, or is it all, all, all?
Yes.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. And it's unanimous, we do nothing?
Okay, so you're on the twenty-fourth, and we'll call it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sasha, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is, um, the Cedar Acres Betterment Private Way discussion, and first I'm gonna let you take the lead on this, if you don't mind. Any woman needs to go?
Thank you, yes, very, very respectful, thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Jim, thank you. Um, Diana, you go.
I'm good.
Yeah.
You just be in Cedar Acres.
Just Brian, uh.
You just be in Cedar Acres. So, I'm in public works today, you know. Um, so after a, 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 a long and a very, very well-trod road, we are here tonight to present, uh, what I, we hope will be the very first, uh, and, 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 and benchmark successful project, uh, under the town's, uh, private land improvement by law. Um, Brian Joyce, Director of Public Works, is here tonight. Um, you've, we've, we've had discussed this in, in open session with the, with the meeting, with the community. Uh, so where we are tonight is, is, uh, is here. Um, the proposal, um, the, the neighborhood's petition uh with a required, uh, number of, of more than eighty percent, um, and the petition has to do a full repave and, and repair of Cedar Acres Road and Lane, uh, including, uh, any updates to any of the catch bases, uh, that are on the site, except, except one's already been taken care of on an emergency basis that's already paid for. Um, there's twenty benefited parcels. Uh, council prepared a packet for which we discussed on a public meeting with the, the residents, that, uh, gi- gives the town both signed easements, which, uh, I have right here. that, uh, gi- gives the town both signed easements, which, uh, I have right here. Um, and acceptance of betterment, um, and so eighteen of the twenty parcels, benefited parcels have signed, we have them right here, they've been vet validated. Um, there's only two that are not, one of them's a vacant parcel, it's been vacant since the development was put into place, but it's still there, and in fact, uh, it is a, uh, it's, it's heading to tax title potentially, because it almost paid that, I do get, I did get that update from the treasurer yesterday, so, uh, the town may end up voting this. So, we may have to pay the betterment, so there you go, so, uh.
There's some irony there, isn't there?
Yeah, uh, so there's a tax contribution, right?
Right, yeah.
Um, and, uh, the, uh, there's another parcel where the owners are no longer in residence and it's being a parcel being sold. Uh, so in light of those two, even though there's a land, you know, even though it's still a land of, in fact, the, the registered owner of the vacant lot is, has, is deceased, and there's no priority on who inherited the rights. Uh, the, the son who lives at the address of the deceased owner in Florida has reclaimed any interest in the land and claimed he was not the heir, so I, I, I don't know. So it's, it, either way, the town's gonna probably take the title, so. So, uh, that said, it, because there is another parcel for sure with owners who are, while they're in the process of sale and they don't live here anymore, are still owners, and they're not here and they haven't signed, council has recommended that they be formally noticed, this is, not that it's required by law, but just to be extra careful, um, and, um, and put them on formal on a sentiment, we'll, based on your actions tonight, we'd, the town's force would send a register, I'd, I'd get a formal, and then we have language from council, we'd send it out, uh, to their known addresses and, uh, and fo- formally notice them and say that on the twenty fourth, the board will impose the betterment, and they have until the twenty fourth to either respond or appear in person, if they don't, it's done. It's, the board can do it anyway, to be clear, council said you don't have to do that, they just, they just put a, a pair of suspenders on us to be safe.
And the notice would go to both properties, even the one where?
Yes, yeah, technically, we'd send it to them, even though the town's gonna end up owning that anyway, so, uh, most likely, so, um,
Okay.
Uh, we don't even have a, we don't, again, the treasurer, he's never even had a clear owner right now, so, um, but we'll do it anyway. We'll send the notice based on all the information we have, just so we cover the bases, um, and if nothing else, we're putting ourselves on notice, so if we acquire, we know there's a betterment potential. Um, the, um.
All the irony is there.
So, um, uh, and, and other, other than that, we're actually, you know, we're, we're, we're good to go, I mean, there's been a lot of community, a lot of community participation, I really appreciate all the work that's been done, all the, all the commitment to this, and, um, I think it has potentially be a real, um, a real, um, a novel approach, and something I think could benefit other, uh, other neighborhoods as well. And the community's come together, um, to do this, uh, and the residents are here, uh, or many residents are here, uh, and Brian can talk more about the particular project. There is a budget, uh, which we'll have a copy of, please, um, which does not include the original work done on that, that emergency fix, so that's off. So, um, but it includes money, uh, the estimates in here are, this is a max amount, this is, so hopefully the goal is for the, the project to cost less than this. It includes the estimate for the, well, actually, you wanna work on the budget since you actually prepared all this, Brian, I'd like to hear.
So, um, so the, the main repair work to Cedar Acres Lane and Drive are, um, the contractor's gonna come in pulverize the existing road, because it's in a state where it can't be milled and overlaid, so it's gonna pulverize the existing road. Uh, we use that aggregate as a sub base, they'll do some fine grading, add material where, where needed, and then build the road up from there with, uh, binder, which is a sub base, and then the top course. And, uh, they'll rebuild the catch basins, uh, raise and reset the grade as needed, um, and so the budget for T L Edwards work is a hundred fifty-one, four hundred and six thousand. The overall budget for the project, which is a conservative budget, uh, not to exceed budget, is two hundred and one, seven, one, seven. And, uh, the delta of those two is, uh, made up with, uh, the tips of legal costs if necessary, five thousand, uh, construction oversight administration, five thousand, police details, thirty-two hundred, uh, materials testing for the, uh, the asphalt, um, of eight hundred, uh, and additional basin repairs, which Chris had said, uh, that, that was the one basin that had collapsed, which-
Well, this is, I, I thought this is, is it?
So the one fifty-one doesn't include, so that, that would be-
Okay, so that's coming out, okay.
Yeah, uh, but, uh, again, this is a, um, a not to exceed amount, so the final betterment assessed to them will be after the project is done. Uh, so, sorry, that subtotal is one seventy, one seventy-five, four oh six, and then contingency of, uh, twenty-six thousand, three eleven, which would be, in the case we, uh, we hit ledge, an inch underground, or something like that, where they, we need to address it, so that's why there's a healthy contingency in that. So the final budget after the road is paved will be, uh, determined, and, and then out be the actual, uh, betterment assessed to the, to the owners. So this, this is a, a certain, uh-
Is that a set evenly amongst the owners or according to the va- right?
Yes, yeah, evenly.
It's a straight even, so how many, how many owners are, well, like-
Twenty, twenty owners.
Twenty, so it'll be twenty divided by whatever the final figure is?
Yeah.
They'll get that as a betterment, how long will the betterment last?
Ten years.
Maybe, is there a neighborhood association that can contact person for it?
Uh, so, the neighbors have been, uh, very cooperative, there's been, uh, I don't know if it's an association, but Chris Murphy, John Berg, and, uh, and Phil have been kind of the ringleaders, uh, they've been very, uh, patient through the whole process, so, um, you've been kinda channeling all documentation through them, and, uh, they delivered the, those documents with a bow on it, actually.
Okay, sorry, I'm doing it that night.
So, so, all right, our, our hope, sorry, our, our hope is that, based on the fact that we have eighteen of, effectively nineteen, um, done, and, and, uh, and unnoticed, hopefully we'll be okay, we hopefully won't have to spend any money on the vehicles. Um, the construction oversight will hopefully be, we have, and we, we'll do it on our own staff, so hopefully that cost will be minimal. The police details are what they are, hopefully, you know, may be able to be reduced to fill in for one, but that has to be a detail, just not a, uh, but it may be only a one-person detail, not two, and it, and hopefully we'll be able to be done in about a week, I think is the goal, I think.
Right.
And then, uh, materials testing is something we do on every project anyway, you wanna make sure that what you paid for is what you got, so, and that's just, that's just the cost. Um, the, the contingency, I guess, does include, you know, again, if there's additional repairs to any of the other basins, so, uh, the only thing I would ask then, we probably should just, formally, I, I would recommend that that hasn't come off, the budget you adopt, um, the initial basic repairs, if it does go back to that one, as we talked about. Uh, but either way, I would not include it in the final costs.
So, just for clarification, you're suggesting that we vote a cost, an actual cost not to exceed?
Is it, uh, see, a hundred and, y- a hundred and ninety-one cents.
Ninety-one thousand? So we're moving that ten thousand dollars?
Yes, I, I, and that was a bracing work that was done in good faith with the town for, and, and a, and a bracing basis, and under, so I, which I authored this. Um, and I don't think it, and based on our conversation, I think it, it's safe to come out. Plus, the, the assessment that was on the other basins seems to indicate that we'll be okay, the contingency is covering, you know.
Right.
Was that what you were saying?
That's true.
So. The, uh, I, I was able to attend the meeting with, um, the residents and Lou Ross, uh, our engineer, and Chris. Lou was, uh, spent a good deal of time focusing on, um, you know, what ifs, what if we don't get a hundred percent of our easements, what if, et cetera? And effectively, I came away from it very comfortable, as you guys know, I, I look for those problems. Lou's point was that while, uh, you know, an individual homeowner might fight the betterment, um, at the end of the conversation, if you're wholly improving their property, there is little left for them to stand upon. You can't prevent the fight from coming if they decide to impose it, uh, but, I don't know, ask them, ask for a show of hands, who wants a better road on Cedar Acres Lane? And I, I, I think you have a hard time.
Wants a better road.
Yeah. Um, so, I came away from that meeting, and I'm only saying this as an incentive, I would encourage the board to consider that you have the preponderance of approval, and any potential litigation risk we might run by not having, uh, two property owners as holdouts is, frankly, I think, worth encountering, because I suspect that this policy will be employed again fairly soon by another neighborhood, and, and so on and so forth. We're going to need to know what has, what, what can happen, and the only way to kind of, we're gonna be able to do that is by experiencing it. We've got safeties in place, we asked for eighty percent approval, we have more than that, right, so I, I respectfully submit to you that I think we should move ahead.
Agreed. Thanks, the only point I wanted to make was that when we established the policy, we asked for eighty percent, knowing there was, you know, a street of ten residents, there's gonna be one crank or whatever. But it looks like, to your point, um, and yours as well, that the, that, that risk is fairly minimal in terms of somebody challenging.
In this case, when we have eighteen of the nineteen actual homeowners, uh, that's, I, I'm gonna do the math at the top of my head, but it's ninety percent, something like that.
It's ninety, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, uh, nineteen, uh, because the, uh, the other, the, the nineteenth is the town, so I guess, uh, you could go up to that favor, so, but.
Eighteen times nine.
Not yet.
And then, right, so I would, I would recommend, um, formally adopting the bu- a budget of one ninety-one, seven, seventeen as a max, obviously, not as the budget, but as the max. Uh, and, uh, so there's two documents I have from maybe one of the other homeowners, um, while, if, if you wanna follow up council recommendation, which I would recommend, saying, you know, do a formal last notice at least to the, the, the homeowners at, uh, four Cedar Acres Lane, um, just to cover all our bases, um, and then set the twenty fourth as the date to impose a betterment in a public meeting. Uh, you can also, at this point, if you wanted to accept the grant of easements, uh, and you can even accept the, the betterments from all the others, if you feel like, or you can just do those all at the same time.
Um, I, I'm sorry, what was the other number, the number four and the four?
It's four, uh, twenty-nine is the one that's the vacant lot.
So, four and twenty, and that?
Yeah.
Would you like a motion?
Please.
All right. Uh, move that the board take the following action. Um, item one, um, accept the betterments as signed at this meeting. Item two, well, hear me out, hear me out, we can, we can amend. Item two, that we, uh, send, uh, letters of notice to the owners of numbers four and twenty-nine Cedar Acres Lane with the intent of imposed betterment. All right, um, item three, that we send as a budget for this project, a number not to exceed one hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Uh, and item four, that we plan for, uh, a formal approval as of meeting of July twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
And if, do you have a fifth?
Go ahead.
You just accept the granted easement as well from each of these?
I thought it was item one.
No, that was that.
You said betterment, that, that's why I went.
It's two. Sorry, I'm, so, uh, okay, uh, forgive me, that an item, item, item one, accept the grant of easement as signed by current owners.
Thank you.
As opposed to betterment.
Okay.
Yep.
What's that?
As opposed to betterment.
Yeah, yeah, stri- striking a word, betterment.
Yep. Is there a second?
We can accept a back by next time.
A second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah, just, the only, yeah.
Or, sorry, any comments, yeah?
Um, are the, are, are the residents okay not having a, a formal neighborhood association to go ahead with this? I, I just, I just wanna be sure, 'cause to make sure people move, they get sick, they old, lots of different things, so, I just wanna make sure that everyone here that's present, probably eighteen of the twenty are here, that you're all right, that there's no formal organized neighborhood group that would be the point person, because this is probably gonna go ahead, and it's, there's probably not gonna be a lot of, uh, real strong ability for you to kind of ask for things at this point, so, that's, that's my concern. To add on to Paul's point, um, ideally, this would have been something that developer would have created under an approval by the, by the, uh, planning board, on the project as a, the developer would have handed over at typically a proportion of the lot sold, residents would have handed over the administration of the, of the neighborhood association, that is a normal operating procedure, but as you sadly know, there's nothing normal about how this came about. Um, the very same thing will apply to Kevin's neighborhood, uh, at some point.
And Diane's.
And Diane's, and they-
And hers.
I think they have a neighborhood.
Well, actually, interestingly enough, we apparently are a public way.
But, but they have a, they have a neighborhood association, I suppose.
Um, I don't believe it has, well, it may, it may, it may be much more authoritative than it was previously, but, and, and for all of that, it is, it's a best practice, and I would encourage you to think about it, because regardless of when it, whether any of you were there, twenty years from now, the fact that structure exists is going to lend, uh, a fair amount of credibility to transference of your deed to the next owner, because they're gonna face the same types of, of questions, uh, so, that's it.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I agree, man, it's, I'm trying to make sure, 'cause you're not gonna live there forever, when it rolls over, the next group is gonna come in saying it's a public way, and you're gonna face the same problems that you've all been through, and it's, makes it easier for you to sell the property.
Okay, so, um, call for a vote, all those in favor, please, say aye, bye, all right, unanimous, congratulations.
Aye.
And I.
Very good, given, I appreciate it.
Just, uh, my point of clarity, with clarification of the town manager, assuming that we're done with this on the twenty fourth, what's the start work there?
So, we've, we've put on notice the contractor, and, uh, we're hoping to do early fall construction.
Okay.
Hmm, just in time for the school buses.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and on that note, if I could just take a minute on a separate, on paving notice, so Pond Street is, yeah,
There you go.
On for being paved before school starts, um, so once that happens, and it, once it happens, w- when we pave all streets, there's a five-year ex- uh, street opening, uh, moratorium on all excavations, and then there's extra protections from six, year six to ten. So we fly the entire neighborhood, uh, uh, over a month ago, and, uh, anybody who has any business in the street, whether it's water sewer, gas, uh,
Yes.
Need to notify D P W, we haven't gotten any, uh, as of yet, but, uh, once it's paved, we have that moratorium in place, unless it's a, an emergency, obviously, uh, water leak, gas leak, things like that.
The Cedar Acres, do you have gas service?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so.
That was just done.
Yeah, they, they, we did it in preparation of doing this, uh, last year, and, and there was one water service, I need to check, I don't know if the homeowners here, uh, that is being completed prior to paving.
Okay.
How does the five-year moratorium work with, um, the public utilities, do we notice them, like, in case they have some grand plan to bury utility wires or something?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so national-grade water sewer and, and Verizon have been noticed.
Okay, thank you very much.
We, we give them our five-year, as best we can, our five-year looking at paving plan, so they can be, uh, get their, you know, projects in order.
Okay.
Thank you all for your patience.
Great, great, thank you everybody.
I'm so, sorry, I didn't-
Yep, if you don't want, I, I hate to do this, but if you could come up, 'cause people are on TV, and people are watching, you just identify yourself, please.
I know.
Sure.
Rachel.
Uh, Tom Berg, three Cedar Acres Lane, I just wanted to, um, I heard you say fall, do we know, like, exactly what date or around on the, the date, sorry?
I told him once we had a vote tonight, I'm gonna talk to him tomorrow, and I'll, I'll email him.
No, 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 the date.
Okay. Uh, and just, just to add, we are in active conversation from the actual neighborhood, getting some contribution for what they would have paid if they had patched it. So, it's not over yet, I'm not promising anything, except that we're at, we're actively advocating, they have their hands full with a strike right now, so I'm gonna, you know, quite as, you know, that should be, that's, we, that's, we-
Wait till they hear from the local macon.
It's something I probably won't have, uh, we share our paving, so we, uh, we pool all of our paving quantities with, um, eleven other communities to get a better price on paving, so we share that contract with eleven other communities, and everybody else is trying to get their paving projects done for school and things like that, so, trying to nail the contractor down with a specific schedule un- until, unless it's like two or three out, weeks out, uh, I probably won't have that specific date, but I'll get a, a ballpark, and then as we get closer, we'll nail the guy.
Is it possible for them to link it to the project, or, like, right afterwards, possibly, I don't know what we're promising?
Yeah, the pulverizing's a different operation, but, uh, they may couple.
That's okay, that's right.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. So, next up, um, our appointments, and, um, what you could, what I would like to do first is ask, um, three people that we're gonna appoint to the harbor committee to come up, so that's if they're here, Lisa Hewitt, Susan Bryant, and Tom Norton. Um, so, when we, um, built the harbor committee last year, um, to, to hand, to move forward with the harbor committee study, um, we appointed everybody to, the harbor committee had not been fully constituted for a long time, but there was one position that only had a year left on it, and that's the slot that Tom Norton filled, um, I, we're not inclined to change, um, the harbor committee right now and add new members, particularly because new members in competition with an open seat like Tom hel- holds, um, just because they're in the middle of a study, and, um, and at the end of that study, we're gonna look and talk about what the right kind of harbor committee will be. Um, so, um- Um, so, um, yeah, and then we will, so we will reappoint Tom, and I'll let you speak in a minute, and then also, per the town, um, town meeting petition, um, we have two designated representatives, one from Cohasset Maritime Institute, which is Lisa Hewitt, and, um, a representative from, um, the Cohasset Student Coastal Research Center, which is Susan Bryant, who's not here, um, she sent an application in, and we got, um, notification from CSCR and CMI naming their appointments. So, I just wanna give you each an opportunity to say hello, introduce yourself, and then we'll go through the appointment process. So, Lisa, can you first?
Hi, evening, um, I'm Lisa Hewitt Dick, I live at twenty-seven Pacarav. Um, I, I think I've been before you a couple of hours on the Harbor Committee, uh, application. Um, I'm very excited about being appointed by, designated by the Cohasset Maritime Institute. Um, I have extensive background in, in land use, um, I was formerly a, uh, a real estate attorney, and I did a lot of work on that. I presently are the, uh, the General Counsel for State Agency, uh, the, for Public Council Services, and I think I bring, uh, to the table a lot of, um, sound experience.
Great. Welcome aboard, and you've gone to all the meetings, I think, or most of them, since it started.
Thank you. Yes, I have, and I, heading up as, as, um, as to a couple of sub-ways.
Great. Tom?
Tom Norton, forty-one Red Fox Lane, um, I've enjoyed my time on the committee, I think we're making tremendous progress. We've identified a lot of unique challenges specific to our area in terms of the geographic, the size of the harbor, the multitude of uses we wanna try to establish, and make them all balance with the community in commercial and personal, and, um, I'm just looking forward to continue this, we're probably halfway through the study at this point, and, like I said, the progress has been, I think, substantial at this point, it's the first one I've ever done, but based on my conversations with other harbor masters, um, on the South Shore, I think it's going very well. I look forward to continue working with you.
And the committee's working with a consultant from, what's the name of the consultant?
Yes.
Harriman.
Harriman. Harriman. Um, and I think we're gonna have an update from the Harbor Committee sometime in the next month or so, just so we know, and then the town knows sort of where we're at, and some of the, um, some of the directions different discussions are going, so, um, does that?
Tom, you, you wanna stay on?
Yes, I enjoy it.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you for that, all right.
Thank you.
Kevin and Steve, any comments?
No.
Okay.
No, keep it up.
Nope.
Glad you're just bidding, you're in.
Is there a mo- yeah.
It's been great.
Is there a motion to, sorry, Lisa, I didn't mean to cut you off.
It's okay.
Trying to move along, Steve keeps giving me this thing, guy.
I was really giving credit to you, you've done a wonderful job, leaving us soon.
Okay, thank you, I'm just kidding. Is there a motion to appoint Tom Norton, CMI Representative Lisa Hewitt, and CSCR Representative Susan Bryant to the Harbor Committee?
So.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe the terms are for three years. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, there remains a number of, um, committees that still have positions open. We have a number of applicants that are here tonight that have applied, sometimes to specific committees, and some have applied to wherever needed most, so I wanted to bring those people who are new to us, who aren't seeking reappointment, um, 'cause they've been on there, um, to just come in, introduce themselves, so we can ask a few questions, find out what their interests, uh, more, might be more directed toward, and, um, so we'll go through them. And I actually don't know who's here and who isn't, so I apologize. Um, is Alex Vanderweil here?
Yep.
Megan McAlick?
Michaelak.
Michaelak?
Michaelak.
Do you wanna come on out, or? And, um, just introduce yourself again and your address.
My name is Megan Michaelak, and I live at two oh five Sawyer Street. Sawyer Street.
And, um, you very wonderfully, um, said that you would be interested in serving on whatever committee you, you needed most, if you wouldn't mind giving us a little update on your background?
Yep. Sure. Um, yeah, I've lived in Cohasset almost two years now, um, I remember I've been standing on a, uh, Cohasset Democratic Town Committee since then, I'm currently, as of April, the Vice Chair of that committee. I, um, graduated Northeastern, I have a, um, a bachelor's degree in busi- business administration, I also have, uh, Masters of Public Administration from the MS Boston. Um, and I also recently completed the, uh, Emerge program, I don't know if you guys have heard of that, but it's a, yeah, so.
Know very well, yeah. Great, good for you.
Good.
Just looking to get involved in, in local politics and local government.
So, with your, with the MPA and then the Emerge program, are you, you know, do you have a specific area that is most interesting to you, whether it's kind of planning, or?
I don't have any, any concrete plans as of right now, um, I'm helping on a few camp, volunteering on a few campaigns, um, in the district, but, but, I don't have any concrete ideas really, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Great, um, anybody have any questions?
Um, no, nothing in particular, just, uh, uh, where do we have need?
So, I, I actually don't have a full list of the need yet, um, I, I know we need people in the Cohasset Cultural Council, and it is, um, um, it's relatively light lifting in terms of time commitment, but it's really critical, and it was my launching pad to the selectman's seat, so I highly recommend that.
Okay.
Um, a couple of these, I have to check on what's still, what's still in play, um, with openings, so I apologize that I don't have that, but after we meet the people that are here tonight, and we get a better sense of where we might be able to use your skills, and, um,
Okay.
we'll reach out, and then we'll do those appointments at a, at a future date, probably in early August.
Uh, one thing I might, uh, recommend, Megan, is, is, uh, all the agendas for all the, any meetings are posted, um, on the town website.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, you can go on the town website, for you and anybody else who's listening, and actually put in your, your email address, and you get notified, notified whenever a meeting is. But what I might suggest that you do, 'cause you have a lot to offer, is, is, um, look at several of the committees and see what might interest you, and then go to, go to some of those, 'cause they actually attend the meetings, and, uh, that way you'll get to know the members of these committees, and they'll get to know you, and, and what generally happens is, is that you may see what is a mix, and the committee, like, pretty soon the committee's bringing you forward and saying, we'd like to have Megan join us, so. It's like anything else, if you, something looks interesting, show an interest in it, attend them, and you'll, you'll, you'll be appreciated and noticed, and that's a great way to just get involved. And any one of us are available for you to pick up the phone and talk about what's going on, any thoughts you have about government, or where you may want to fit in, or whatever, so.
Sounds good.
I'm really glad to see people like you come forward.
Thank you.
Jump into town and, and get involved, yeah.
So, yeah, all I'm mirroring this too, uh, I'm looking to see what you're interested in, it looks like your background, you'd fit into a lot of, you know, the options that are there.
Hmm.
Um, some of it has to do with time commitment, some of it has to do with interest, and some of it has to do with something you've always been interested in, and you wanna get involved. Um, you need to take a lot of time and, and get into something that's a little bit novel, um, but certainly, yeah, the town is always looking for somebody who is willing to just put the time in and do something that they enjoy. Uh, we're looking for good governance, good, good people who are willing to do, you know, a little work at, uh, behind the scene, there are a lot of, kind of, praise, but, uh, it's kinda fun, you know, just enjoy it, it's, uh, a little different.
I can't help but notice that you're generational, general, gener- generationally apart from us.
It's showing, it's starting to show.
Well, it's, it's more like contrast. But if you, um, yeah, you've, you've been here for two years, and I, I suspect that, um, that you've, you've made contact with any number of other people, um, in your age cohort, and I say this respectfully, because one of the things that we miss a great deal is drawing, drawing the younger residents into the governance of town at an early age. They, um, the perspective is different, the vitality is very different, um, and it's needed. So, to the extent that you find something that you like, uh, I just, I ask you to please talk up the fulfillment aspect to your friends, uh, to the people you, you circulate with, because we, you know, you start to look around at the committees, and the weight is borne by, by folks who have years of experience, but a whole lot less at stake with respect to the immediate impact on their lives, right, so it's helpful to, to see some, some new faces.
So, perfect segue, and I'll, everybody that's out there, you know, we're not gonna repeat this for every one of you, so it kinda goes around, but, but one other thing to, to look on the website and get information about is the master planning process, and, and also the harbor planning process. There are two big studies underway right now that really will shape a lot of decisions, whether they're zoning decisions, or just kind of, um, you know, statements of purpose, decisions around, around town, that, that are taking place at these committees that are meeting very regularly, and that is the best place to go there. In fact, we had a, um, public input meeting where people were going around and putting yellow stickies next to the things that they valued in town, just based on photographs. And, um, that process, I think, will just open up so much, um, of the potential, uh, ways to get involved in, in making Cohasset, um, better, and, and, uh, you know, maintaining what's good about it, um, or great about it, so, anyway, thank you, and we will be in touch.
Awesome, thanks.
All right, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Megan.
Um, Stephen O'Duggan.
Hey, Steve.
Come on up. I'm gonna ask you to introduce yourself in a minute, but I, I will tell you, your, your experience, um, in which you can, I, uh, elaborate on, obviously would make you a wonderful person for the Harbor Committee, but because that's in the middle of a study, um, we felt like it was not the right time to upset that awful heart, but hopefully, um, I'd like to hear a little more about you after you introduce yourself, and, uh, we can find a place to get you engaged.
Uh, Stephen O'Duggan, I live on ten Great Rooster Trail, worked there about, uh, three years, and prior to that, I was at ten, uh, Highland Court, I've been in town since about two thousand two. Uh, two young kids, uh, eleven and eight, in the Cohasset schools here. Um, like, I've been working in the heavy construction, the big business for, since I was, for, for my whole life, and now, uh, for the past few years, I've been in the heavy marine construction dredging, power driving, some foot on those lines. I've also been an avid fisherman, and a voter, and a sailor, and, um, I, we have a hell, a heck of an opportunity down there in Cohasset, that's why there's, to the Coha, to the Harbor Committee, 'cause it's just, I'd love, I'd like to be involved in how to make that a little more opening to the rest of the residents, and just the polished that jewel that we have, just, thanks to the love in there.
Yep. The Harbor. Um, so, the first thing I'll, I'll say, and then I'll let my colleagues speak, um, you know, one of the great things about municipal government is, even if you're not on a committee, you're welcome to participate in meetings, um, most of our committee meetings, um, have public input opportunities, and especially the study committees, the master plan and the Harbor Committee, they're always looking for public input, so even if you're not on that specific committee, if you have the skills and the interest, you can have just as much influence on the overall conversation, um, by, by engaging Lisa Hewitt, who was here before, was literally a member of the public, um, for the last year, and showed up at meetings and spoke up when there was the opportunity to do so, and, and, um, so I would highly encourage you to think about doing that, um, kind of on how everything rolls out for committee assignments, um, so, Steve?
No, I'm, I actually, uh, um, I, I'm looking at this thinking of the very same, the ob- the obvious, of course, which is the application to the Harbor Board. I am wondering, Chris, if beyond immediate committee work, is there an opportunity to serve as a, um, an ad hoc advisor to some of the projects that we're reviewing down there outside of the committee's, uh, seawall?
Potentially, yeah, absolutely.
Um, it, it, it also brings, would potentially bring, who am I, Steve or Stephen?
Stephen, actually.
Okay. Yeah, it would bring Stephen into circulation with a variety of other folks, and, and engage his area of expertise on fairly specific items.
Absolutely, you've been, you've been a Harbor Master before, you've been.
Oh, yes, I do, I very well.
There you go.
Yeah.
So, so you're, you're, you're engaged there, so, if you wanna stop by someday, feel free.
Cool.
Uh, and again, I would also encourage you to reach out to Tim Davis, the Chairman of the Harbor Committee, uh, and, and attend their meetings if you have them.
I actually reached out to Lori prior to the, uh, the dredging operation, and, um, unfortunately, it was out of her control, mostly Yarny Core, and, you know.
Actually, Yarny Core was mostly out of control.
Well, well, Lori and I, we commiserated, and, 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 sorry, you know, it's disincor, as the way I say it, I don't know how that, any systems go moving forward, and maybe I'm not going to do it.
We are having, we're having, we're having quiet regional conversations about trying to create on the South Shore, what the Cape's already done, successfully, which is a regional dredging operation, and, um, and it's just, it's a, it's a harder lift here, but there's already a model, so, uh, several committees are already talking about this stuff, so, uh, so I'm happy to, happy to get your input, so.
Sign me up. We're moving to figure this stuff out.
Yeah, no, I understand, no, but, but just input on how it all works and how.
Apart from the obvious, which is the, the Harbor Committee, Stephen, are there other particular areas that, just areas of discipline that are interested?
I'm just a, basically a mechanic, is what it is, you know, so if I can help, I mean, I've been, um, as I've gotten older, my life has spent more time working, um, correcting mistakes that started off the planning, planning phases, and those mistakes just ended up, I mean, it's been costing all the parties, involved a lot of money. If I can help, I can put my little two cents in, you know, hopefully get around a corner a little bit, and, and whatnot, I mean, it's all eventually our tax money anyways, and it makes it a little bit better. But that's, you know, as, yeah, as I've gotten older and gotten my hands away from it a little bit, it's mostly had my time in the spirit, so.
Just trying to make it smoother than the beginning. We've got some floodgates you might wanna take a look at.
Working on those.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, I don't get any started on the floodgates.
Okay. Right, now, thank you.
Kevin, anything else?
Yeah, so one quick thing, um, if, if you're interested, as I see you are, uh, one of the other, um, committees, the Economic Development Committee, which is kinda quiet, but that's one other, I presume, once the planning of the master plan, Harbor Committee start to really, you know, publish, publish product, that's probably gonna be the next step of how to be executing the plans.
Ah, you're interested.
And the, um. And the other thing is, if you have something that you're interested in, uh, I, I started by going to some of the meetings, just taking the time out of the schedule and saying, you know, can somebody, maybe said the kids will be gone for an hour and a half, kind of fit into the schedule, and see how it works, and then you, you realize, is it gonna work, you know, you've been doing this for a year or so, or, you know, whatever, you know, it's gonna be, and it just, you get some interesting meetings, you get some information about the town, and you, you kind of start to shoehorn it into the schedule. That's all.
I'm also, I would emphasize all Paul says, if you go to the meetings, get to know people, yeah, uh, especially on the Harbor, especially if we're gonna reconstitute it, um, a year or so from now.
Well, it was constituted at one point, and then it kinda fell way, quite wayside.
It, it was by bylaw kind of a Harbor Management Committee, that then kind of faded out when we had a professional Harbor Master, and the professional management of the town was a little different. And then, we just used the blocks, or the, the kind of roles that were in the bylaw for the Harbor Committee to form the, where we kind of re, it hadn't met for a while, we reconstituted them and filled the same slots, um, t- for the purpose of the study. But the idea, to your point, is this Harbor Committee will likely be different in a year and a half, once the study's done, we're gonna, that, one of the things that the study's gonna tell us is, we need this kind of a Harbor Management Group, or a Economic Development Committee will come out, a master plan, or somehow that's all gonna dovetail with some, some guidance as to how we're gonna govern some of these bigger pick pieces later on, so. So, I will be in touch with some names and contacts and figure out next steps, you should definitely introduce yourself to this guy, Fran Collins, because we have a lot in common. And, uh, anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
So, I know everybody else in the audience except you in the white, if you don't, well, if you wanna come, oh, you're Lee Darst.
I'd like to be on the ZDA.
I, I, yes, come on up, I have four women's, uh, resumes here, so I know who you are. So, yeah, Lee Darst is in the packet, um, she's, she's an attorney, um, seeking appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, Lee, if you could formally introduce yourself and your address, please sit down, make yourself comfortable.
Oh, I'm Lee Darst, I live at thirty-four Quinns Lodge, in Cohasset, I've lived there for three and a half years. I am not a stranger to the community, I grew up in Hull, I lived in Hame for sixteen years before I moved to Cohasset. I have a law practice, um, in St. Louis, and I have, uh, my children are all grown up, they're adults, and so at this point in time, have abilities and skills that I think would help my community. I was on the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, when I lived in Wareham, in nineteen ninety-six and nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, I resigned when we moved to Hame, when we located Hame. Uh, so I have been on the Board of Appeals in the past. I have a, besides a law practice, I have a general law practice, I do real estate, um, family law, probate, wills, a lot of different things. Um, I also have a real estate business where I represent clients and sellers. I've attended the last three town meetings, um.
For you, that's always a good thing?
It's fascinating, Cohasset is the smallest place that I've ever been, so, yeah, I've very much enjoyed watching the local government.
Tuesday nights, best entertainment you can find.
Is there, um. Any questions from the board?
Um, actually I have a question for you, what openings are on ZBA?
So, there is, um, a, I believe, an associate position on ZBA and a, um, permanent position on ZBA. There is a permanent member who is reapplied, Peter Gertica, for a permanent piece, which would leave open an associate member position.
Got it.
Um.
Okay.
For anyone interested, um, and will make those appointments at a subsequent meeting. Is that, am I right?
No, I think it's, no, he, he wasn't a permanent member?
Who's Ben?
No, so that's the position.
No, Ben wasn't alternate, but they all vote.
Right.
That's what's good.
Well, they all vote, either they, either they're associate members.
So, yeah. Um.
Have you happened to have been able to attend any of the zoning advisory board meetings?
No.
'Cause you may want to, that's a, when, they don't meet totally frequently, but I mean, you can, you can see when their agenda is, and get a hold of the chair, which Chris can tell you who it is, and, anyway, just, it, it might be good to, uh.
Would it, should it?
Um, yes, since I, I saw this in the newspaper, that, uh, there was a lot of unfilled positions, and the application period was June twenty-first, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And the, um, although I do have copies of all their agendas, all their meetings and all the minutes, um, they have not met since I, um, applied for some interest.
Good, so, if you go in, I think it'd be good for you to attend those, as you move through the process, yeah.
A plus on the preparation.
Definitely.
Yes, I have a lot, all of the, uh, all of the, uh.
Yeah, very good. Good. Any other committees that would interest you that you can think of, and maybe those, Steve just asked for?
Um, eh.
Or would you be willing to c- in any other committees? It looks like this is a fit for you, but I just.
I would be interested in other committees, this was the immediate fit that jumped out.
S- seems like a fit, right, yeah.
As I said, I, I have the experience background and the time, um, and I think all of my background comes together and would, would, um.
And the internet. With the student.
Be very helpful to the committee. I ha- have, uh, you know, I would be interested in other areas of town, I, I'm currently on the Board of Three Nonprofits, however, the time commitments for those are, um, not that difficult, right, wouldn't, wouldn't over my schedule, hurt my schedule.
Very familiar with Schools on Wales, which is such a great organization.
Yes, I'm a tutor, I've been a tutor for four years.
Good for you.
Uh, in addition to being on the Board for the last two years, the Board only meets, uh, five times a year.
Four times a year.
But the tutoring is once a week and I can schedule by, you know, time around.
That's great. Great.
Um, you know, one quick thing, I mean, surely it's a perfect fit for the, you know, the, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, one of the things we've, we've found is that the, kind of the startup period, when somebody starts on a committee that's new, is a bit of a learning curve. Uh, I think we've already probably done all the background and know what goes on with the Z- Zoning Board of Appeals, so that's one of the bigger boards in town. And oftentimes, to get up to speed, it's nice to have somebody who's had a real estate background or a law degree, in addition to Board of Appeals experience.
Um, thank you, uh, yes, well, the, I lived in the town of Wareham, uh, and they are approximately, I think, about seventeen or eighteen thousand people, so.
Wow.
The Board of Appeals, um, met twice a month and, um, each meeting was rather lengthy because there was quite a bit of development, um, in the town at that time. So, uh, as I said in interview, I, I sat on the Board for two years, so I, I had the experience.
Great.
Just stand how they work.
Yeah. All right, thank you, we will be in touch.
Thank you very much, everybody.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, nice to meet you, yes.
Very nice to meet everybody, I've seen everybody's pictures in the paper and, uh, had the time to meet.
Here we are. My pleasure.
Joy, nice to meet you, so thank you for going on.
And I owe Carrie O'Donnell, uh, an apology, um, she submitted her application, I said, oh, I think we'll be at, at this at seven forty-five tonight, we're gonna move fast.
No, no. No, it's fine. Of course.
So, um. Carrie, introduce yourself and.
So, I'm Carrie O'Donnell, and I live at eleven Beach Street. Uh, I have lived here in Cohasset with my husband and four children for nineteen years. Uh, I have a, uh, Bachelor of Arts from Saint Lawrence University in Government and a Master's in Journalism and Memorial U. Um, that's my educational background, my professional work experience was primarily in technology and technology sales, um, until I have been at home now with my children for the last twenty years. Um, I spend a lot of time working with my kids' school organizations, um, I've been a treasurer of a school's, uh, parents committee. Um, I served as a mentor for Krista Wright Boston, which is an outback organization in Boston. And I have served for the last fifteen years, um, the Sandy Beach Association, and, um, I have had a number of different roles at that organization. But the last thing I did was, uh, I, one of the, I, I was the project manager for the build of the, uh, bathhouse at the beach. And, um, in that process, I was able to spend a lot of time in town government in the last year, going through all the different committees, um, and one of which was, uh, CPC. And that really resonated with me, the mission of what CPC does and, um, kind of my experience as a mom in town and, um, certainly working with the beach. Um, when Diane told me about the position being open, I kind of thought that would be a really good fit for me, and I think I've got some good perspective to contribute to the cause. Um, and so I've submitted respectfully an application for CPC.
Thank you, any questions or comments?
Um, and y- did, did I understand you say you effectively were the project manager on the bathhouse?
Yeah, I mean, we're, uh, uh, org- Sandy Beach Association is a private land trust, Board of Trustees run with group decision-making, using Robert's rules and everything else.
Right.
But, you know, the project itself needed to be delegated to kind of one person, so while we made decisions together and came to committees together, the execution of the project kind of was on my hand. I did a lot of the, the running around, the building decisions, some of the design work.
Yep. Okay.
And I did all the areas.
No, I, I just, I, I.
Worked with all the contractors, subcontractors.
I th- I, I think of that as a, a potential set of skills that could be useful to, um, uh, to CPC. You know, thinking ahead, uh, thinking ahead on a project and, and what, what problems could be encountered.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Is often a helpful way to think through a, um, a structured efficiency when you're about to spend money.
Yeah, yep.
Paul?
No, thanks for, uh, stepping up.
Yeah.
Looks like you already have, so, it's.
It would look like the extension.
Yeah.
It would be a great fit for CPCs.
So, we're not doing, just to be clear, we're not doing appointments tonight, but, um, we'll probably have a slate on for all of the different positions.
Yes, I. Yes, I. It's just a different strategy.
I, I, obviously, um, I did reach out to Carrie, um, as a friend, because I thought she would be perfect at this, but more importantly, because I was so impressed when you came before CPC.
Oh, thank you.
Um, your presentation skills were really superior to many that we have, with no disrespect to all the wonderful people that put projects in front of us, but it was very professional, and I, I thought this would be a good fit as well, so.
Thank you.
Um, thanks for coming in tonight, your time, and we will be in touch.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, okay.
Did you meet Russ?
Good, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, we talked today.
Yeah, we talked, yeah.
Yeah, and Robin?
And Robin's here for a little bit of another, uh, topic.
Yeah, no, I know about that topic.
Okay, so we're gonna move on, um, I will, um, you know, we will put the, all the appointments together on a sheet and we'll discuss those at a soon future meeting. Um, okay, um, really quickly, we have the FY nineteen meeting calendar, um, that we talked about a little bit, two, uh, two meetings ago. Um, and we wanna try to get this as set as possible, um.
This is a calendar for the entire fiscal year, gives us like a, I'll, I'll look at that.
The entire fiscal year.
Uh, there's a, there's obviously some still flexibility in this, um, you haven't said a town meeting, this gives you some ideas about what, when you could do in December, and when the annual would be either in the very end of April or beginning of May. Um, which tweak, and it would, which would tweak the town election, it would also tweak when the government is on, before, uh, it, come March eighth. Um, the only, you know, i- there's always some challenges, and I don't, you know, there could be holidays, anniversaries, business trips and stuff, which is the reason I'm trying to set this as far in advance as possible. Um, September's a particularly dicey month, we, uh, uh, part- partly, I'm, I'm traveling one week, I have the ICMA conference in Baltimore, and I'm on the conference committee for next year, so I need to be there anyway. Um, that's part of my annual, uh, professional development anyway. Um, so, uh, and you, and there's such a gap from August fourteenth, so I, I, we originally looked at it September eleventh and twenty-fifth, I'm recommending you move maybe up to the fourth and the eighteenth. You know, like, probably with the eighteenth, that is the first night of Yom Kippur, and it's the holiest thing on the Jewish calendar, and, uh, well, hey, so may not be the best night to have a meeting, um. That, that said, you know, there it is, so, um, i- the, um, and the only reason you're wrong, and that, that keeps with your, you try to do the, you try to do the second and fourth, the second and fourth is usually when, when you meet. Um, that would be a little off in, in that month, uh, it would, you'd be the same cycle the rest of the year, pretty much, the second and fourth, uh, except in December, because I don't think you want to meet on Christmas Day, um, so.
Right, thank you for that.
Uh, are there, are these big kind of works?
He's a huge kid, doesn't turn a tree. He's gonna bring pay, he's gonna bring payers to us all.
That's true. That's true. Um, does anybody have any sort of general question, uh, issues with this? Um, that, you know, one of the things that I've been trying to, I reached out to the board on was to see if we could fit one more meeting in before August fourteenth. Because, um, we really need one night, I think, two to three hours to do Chris's annual review, set our annual goals and objectives, and then, I mean, we could follow up with Chris's annual goals and objectives bas- after we get ours done. And then we need to at least get the budget process in motion, I see that as one meeting, but clearly we have a lot of other business that we have to take care of. So, um, I, I, I think we're just gonna have to go with the twenty-fourth now and s- try to get, and we may have to start an hour earlier, would that work for, it's not ideal for me, but, I mean, if we can get an hour early on and get some business underway, um, so that we can really spend some quality time doing the review process and the goals and objectives process. I don't know, I mean, we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place.
It'd be better doing that, bec- if we can't do another meeting, we just have to, have one meeting, we have a power meeting, I guess.
We have a power meeting.
Seem to me that's better on our schedule.
Generally, but a meeting is gonna have a general business combined with.
I was trying to avoid that, but I don't, I don't know that we can, because of people's travel schedules and vacation schedules.
Well, at this point, the twenty-fourth, you're going to have the continuation of the Luchins, you know, the, the Atlantica manager, uh, for sure, uh, hopefully for sure. You have the wrap-up with Sierra Eagles, which should only take five minutes or forty.
Five minutes.
Um, after that, there's nothing that I'm aware of that's pending, uh, there's, you know, there's, I don't, I don't think there's any other licenses or permits, but they might pop up, but there, uh, there's nothing big that we're aware of, I don't think, but.
There's one, um, how was that for humanity, is, event, kind of thing, yeah, that's a.
Just quick, so, th- those are, th- those may not take that much time, depending on how much time you interact.
Right, right, and so maybe what we do is do, get, get rid of business in an hour and a half, and just be very strategic about that, and then do, maybe do the review.
Between those three items, if we take an hour and a half, we should all be fired.
Well, that's true, I'm just, but I'm just saying, just never know, Steve, we're gonna, right.
Okay, careful.
Yeah, we, we could do it in an hour, actually.
Yeah, start at, uh, six thirty, six?
Six thirty.
Let's plan to start July twenty-fourth at six thirty.
Six thirty.
We also have, we do have to make some appointments, they could wait till August fourteenth, people stay in their positions, but I wanna get that taken care of, it's a priority too.
Yeah, you don't have any, th- th- there's, there's no hold of, you're gonna, you hold over, I think you could wait to, on some of your appointments.
Okay, are we set on this schedule, 'cause if we are, then Tracy, if she could send out the, because it's automatically goes along with our committees.
Right.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
The only, um, the only thing I wanna mention is the December tenth, we have listed here as a special town meeting.
Potential, you're not gonna set that, this is, by not being this calendar, you're not setting the town meeting dates.
Potential, okay.
No, but we'll, let's get the notice over, so we can have it on our calendar.
But that's the global.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're not doing it, no.
But you, you are, and that would be in, in August, you'd be potentially looking at those dates for.
Finalizing those specifically.
Or at least, at least coming to some conclusion.
Give me the one date, the date for the special.
Right, and then you had to, and you do have to make some decision about the annual, the further advance we have that, the better the school's gonna adapt.
Special. In annual.
So, yeah. So, I'll see why we couldn't do that in any time, uh.
Here.
In August, okay.
But I think you should just wanna, let, let me circulate those and get to the schools, make sure this is all.
Right, there was always pressure to try to get a, a special town meeting date earlier in the summer, because we were trying to have it earlier in the year, but we're not gonna do that this year because of the, the national elections and everything.
Yeah. I think it's, so December third, the reason, the tenth is as late as you can go, the third is also the first line of Hanukkah, as it turns out, so, I don't know if you wanna do, I don't know if that would be considered a treat or not necessarily for, uh, for folks. Um, so, uh, that's a, for a Monday, I mean, keeping the special time names on a Monday, which is just the one in past practice, you could do it on another day of the week if you want.
Okay. So. Okay, all right, um, okay, so, um, I, I wanna move on, but I wanna jump ahead, if it's okay, because.
And you wanna just adopt the calendar for next year yet, or not? You wanna adopt these as Monday dates?
Adopt these, the, the meeting dates?
Just get the Sunday.
The, every other meeting dates, sure, um, is there a motion to adopt the proposed FY nineteen Board of Selecting Meeting Schedule?
Yes.
So, what?
Time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So, we'll get invites on that, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, I wanna move to transient vendor discussion, if that's okay, um, only because I did, uh, reach out to Robin Lawrence, just as a member, as a s- the representative of Sandy Beach Association, just to listen to our conversation and, um, weigh in as we talk about this, um, and I don't wanna hold you up any longer, 'cause I promised him too, that we were gonna be a little bit earlier, um, and he.
Make a motion, change the agenda to move the transient vendor discussion to, uh, eight forty-five.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
All's in favor?
Right.
All right, okay, so, um, Chris, you wanna?
So, um, as it turns out, um, the Board has the authority to grant more transient vendor licenses, should it so be interested, should it so choose. It's been three historically, um, which goes back into the, the deep dark past, um, in the, of the nineties. Um, and the, uh, so, that's a separate issue from transient vendors at Sandy Beach. As it turns out, Sandy Beach parking lot is actually zone, is a residential zone, 'cause I assume at one point it was probably gonna be houses, uh, but then it was bought and it was turned into preserve, and it's been like that for a hundred years. So the zoning was never changed, the parking lot from residence, C, or I think it's residency. So, once upon a time, a different selector, selectmen, and back in the pack, and, you know, back in the late eighties, I guess, got very big on finding host prop position, two and a half ways of raising revenue, I'm gathering that's probably what motivated this. They gave more permits, and Sandy Beach parking lot began to fill up with other vendors, at least that's what I've read from the history of the zoning decision, Dr. Lawrence can correct me if I misunderstood. And, um, Sandy Beach folks got a little perturbed and, uh, and sort of rent neighbors.
Yes, did the neighbors.
And, and went to the zoning board, and the zoning board said, hey, you really can't be doing this, and they imposed a decision that limited to two, uh, only food and only between the, uh, labor, um, Memorial Day of Labor. And that's been in place now since, I think, nineteen ninety-one. There are still some people around who were part of that, uh, from some of the names I recognize, but I think a fair number of them are no longer in the world. So, uh, they've moved on to the great ten million in the sky, so, uh, um, the, uh, uh, so, what it does imply though, it says it can be two, they can't be anyone to two at a time. Uh, so, one, I guess, a prior board, and I don't know the history of this, made a decision to keep them cap- cap it at three, and then the vendors kind of rotate themselves, uh, that's kind of how it works. Should, should there be a desire by this board to increase the number, we'd have to sit down and work with the Sandy Beach Association to figure out a way to rotate, and I don't think that, I mean, it could be done, we, I, I, if that's the board's will, we'd be happy to set something up. We'll call the transient vendors who have an interest in Sandy Beach, we'll talk to the Sandy Beach Association and figure out some kind of rotational schedule, so that folks could be there, if that's, if that's the way the board wants to go.
So, two thi- two quick things, if we could start talking with questions, then Robin, if you, if you don't mind coming up to the table, and then, one of the questions I have just is, we issue three transient vendor licenses right now, and so, right now, they, they literally police themselves, so if.
Yep. That's for town. More, more or less, yeah, th- I th- that's how it works now, I believe.
Is that your understanding as well?
More or less, yeah, there, there, there's no control, uh, they've been relatively, you know, well, well behaved.
Mm-hmm.
That's not.
Two ice cream and a lemonade, I think, that's right.
Right.
So if one of them's driving and they see the other one, they go someplace else, is that kind of, okay, yeah, okay.
Well, there's, there's never been any enforcement of the issue, so, it's, it's hard to say, uh, um, I would like to just, um, before we even start, thank, uh,
We're getting off.
Right, right. Right.
Town government and all of our community for helping us, uh, with a successful Sandy Beach house.
That's great.
Which, uh, haven't heard to date one negative comment, and it's, uh, definitely going to be something that will last forever. And I thank the town government and all of our community, and, uh, capital campaign went well, and it's actually still going, will go to the end of the year, and people can, uh, still contribute and buy a brick and have their name, uh, etched in perpetuity.
Right.
Now, in terms of the, um, vendors, three appears to be enough, however, uh, one of my concerns is that. Now, in terms of the, um, vendors, three appears to be enough, however, uh, one of my concerns is that the vendors appear to come from far and wide, and we would prefer if the selected vendors have closer roots to Cohasset, uh, and I say this, uh, at a self-serving comment, um, the association is considering opening a food service at our beach house next year based upon some market research we're going to be doing and with the community, whether it's wanted, whether it's not, what they want, and I, I would hope that, um, any criteria used to choose vendors would take into consideration the, uh, locality of, of the service.
But that was one of the reasons I, you know, wanted you to come in to, my understanding when, when the Sandy Beach House came for C B C was that there was gonna be some kind of that food service or vending, or maybe not cooking, but I don't know, but, but I, I guess I wanted to understand whether that was still a potentiality,
Exactly.
assuming it went through, I would imagine it would have to get zoned properly and would have to go through Z B A.
No, a- a- actually, the building, there's shell space which is ready to accept all the equipment for food service. And we have, we have gone through the Board of Health and will continue to go through the Board of Health again for the permitting process.
But. Yeah.
I'm not sure, if they require a zoning, I mean, I, I don't know that it's, it could be something that's zoning.
Well, we may, we'll go through whatever we have to, if we decide to go that way.
Right. Right.
Well, again, i- i- it actually brings up the, the, the same question there, uh, the town does, certainly doesn't wanna be in conflict with the Sandy Beach Association,
Right.
but the town does have a parking lot and therefore has the rights to administer who shows up and who doesn't. Um, I agree with your sentiment that we should favor local vendors where possible, as a matter of fact, of the three licenses that we've granted, two of them are local businesses, one is on, one is, one is out of town. Um, this subject came up because a, uh, a local vendor would wanted to, uh, offer something different actually than is offered currently, uh, but was told there, there was no capacity for, uh, for a license for, for a transient vendor. So, if you were to pursue, um, the, the licensing for food service there, first of all, based upon the transient offerings that currently exist, I'd find it hard to believe that there'd be a whole lot of, uh, conflict. You don't have food truck down there serving burgers or, or hot dogs or, or other, other types of casual food. You get ice cream, lemonade, uh, request to bring, uh, frozen cappuccino down, you know, from, from a local vendor, that's unlicensed. So, that's one thing to consider, the other, of course, is that if you're going, i- if Sandy Beach Association actually proceeds toward a variance because it becomes apparent that it's necessary, I think it's worth, uh, the town considering the very same approach and asking for, uh, you know, an appeal of the existing finding, number one, so that we could put in place some sort of administration, right now, all we have is restriction and no administration. Uh, and then separately, think about it from the perspective of policy, right now, we've got a policy that was created in nineteen ninety-one. No one here, as, as much as Chris has been able to dig into it, no one here understands or can identify the bases for the number three, and the three should, and the three shall be the number, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, i- i- in, in light of some interest of, of local merchants, and gosh, I hope, I hope more of them pop up and there's a, you know, there's a dogfight for, you know, for it. Ultimately, the question is not how many licenses are out there, but what's the, what's the proper administration for their, uh, representation at publicly owned venues? And I say that openly, I'm not trying to be, uh, vague about it, Rob, but rather to say, look, the beach is obvious, it's obvious Memorial Day, Labor Day, right? But so is the common, so is government.
Right.
Um, you know, possibly over time, you might find that down there, you know, Veterans Memorial Park might be a, ac- actually might be a pretty interesting location, uh, you know, if you've got events taking place in town or at the harbor, that's, uh, we may wanna consider tha- the approach to Z B A from that perspective.
Okay.
Well, the, s- s- there are, for example, the, the farmers market has licensed food vendors as part of their umbrella approval, but they're not transient vendors, they're event vendors.
Right, but that's, that is, that is a single day.
Right.
Uh, for the, for the course of the run of the, of the farmer's market.
Right.
And I'm, you know, a- a- again, here, and herein lies the, the point about the administration. Obviously, you don't wanna, we, we don't wanna be licensing vendors which then cannibalize the potential for Sandy Beach Association to raise money.
Right.
Right, uh, or extra revenue, but at the same time, we don't wanna restrict what has habitual been a very attractive, um, if you will, small town feature of the beach.
Mm-hmm.
My gosh, look, there's the Nona's truck, there's, you know, there's the Delta one, the off nails on a naze, a little bit newer, we should get that idea. And likewise, we don't wanna be, uh, you know, in, uh, inserting ourselves or allowing to be inserted licenses that we in good faith and good intent granted, but suddenly cannibalize a, a now reasonably well-established farmer's market.
Now, what, um, what is the policy toward the Little League vendors, vendors at Little League field, is that?
That's a very good question, Rob, I don't know that there is any such formal policy, um, i- i- the.
So, their snack shack is.
I wonder if the snack shack is owned by the Little League, uh.
Right, but it goes through, through Board of Health, but not.
Right. Well, that's for permitting.
For permitting, right.
For permit, uh, uh.
It's a very good question, I don't know the exact.
But, you know, the, Sandy Beach Association is a five oh one C three, so it's enough profit.
Right.
Terrible organization, as I assume the Little League, uh, Little League, uh, operation is, so, and, and that's, that's, we're probably in the same ballpark.
Little League is what?
Well, no, the zone, the zoning piece is what we, what we keep talking about, because there's.
Sandy Beach is not commercially zoned, it's, it's.
But then again, the ballpark, I don't believe is either.
No, it probably isn't, um, I really don't have any idea what that's on top of, yeah, the only reason I know about this is because of the decision.
So, I, I have just a couple kinda global questions, so, to me, I think we need to have a very substantive conversation because the, all of these, um, licenses expire on December thirtieth, so, and we're in the middle of the summer, right, the second, so, that's a separate issue, but I do think we need to have, you know, in October, we need to really discuss this fully, I mean, one, one of the things that concerns me the most about any vending of food at Sandy Beach in particular, but really anywhere in town is, and we would have, we should know exactly where people can go and can't go, and when they can be there and not be there.
Mm-hmm.
Like, can you pull a hamburger truck up, you know, if they have a transient vendor license to common in the middle of November? I mean, those are the things we need to talk about, but my biggest concern is waste, and there is nothing that makes me crazier than people and, and these trucks and everything else that leave cans and spoons and.
The, the zo- the zoning decision actually.
Well, that was a point, the trash issue is a, is a big issue, Paul.
The trash issue is a big issue that.
The, the zoning decision requires the vendors to clean up after themselves, they have to clean up all of their product.
Requires a clean up.
Right.
From the beach, so, if you had, uh, Nona's napkins and Dell's cups, that Dell, they're supposed to be picking up and taking them away at the end of the day, I don't know if that's happening, right, that weren't forced.
But, but they're selling it to people and those people are putting it in the, let's say, let's say they're doing everything right and putting it in the trash, while at the end of a big weekend, you have trash barrels overflowing.
Right, right. A- a- and, and so, when this was put into place, obviously, it was a different world, um, I mean, I don't.
Right. But I think that has to be part of the whole conversation in terms of licenses.
Right, i- i- it does, um.
Well, you know, the association, um.
There's also food delivers, by the way, which I've done to do, that's not good.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you mean pizza.
During Jaws, there were about thirty cases today.
P- p- yeah, pizza, whatever, you call, you deliver, it's like delivered to your house.
So, the association takes the trash issue, uh, um, very seriously, in fact, some of our butters, and we do have a, um, a gentleman, uh, from the neighborhood is, is on board now, um, and we try as much as we can to keep that place clean, and we've even gone to some augmenting the town collections with some private collections, so we, we need to keep the place clean, just, just for our own sake.
Yeah. I think we have to have that conversation, Fran, I'll get to it in two seconds, um, the, the, the other thing I think we need to talk about now is, is there a, a desire, a need to make any kind of determination for, you know, do we wanna add a vendor license, a transient vendor license, and set a schedule for the rest of the summer for an inquiry that, um, that came forward to us? Or is this just something we wanna discuss more holistically, that includes what Sandy Beach Association might be doing for food vending, what, what needs to happen with zoning, all the things we just talked about.
Now, is, is there any evidence that another license is necessary? And I, I don't know the research, Tom, I have.
We. There, I, I've, I've received a direct inquiry after a rejection, and that would, the, the, I don't, I don't think this is any mystery, the proprietor of the Seabird Cafe would like to bring a pedal bike with a, a frozen box, as I understand it, down to Sandy Beach, uh, to dispense, uh, frozen coffee drinks. That's, that is the, the request, at this point, there is no action that the board could take because the existing policy is limiting to three, and, uh, even if we were granted a license, we would only be adding to the mix without, you know, without any kind of, uh, structure for the vendor appearances, so.
Who actually appoints the vendors?
Well, you know, you appoint.
They apply and.
They apply, it, it's.
I don't remember ever okaying, well, we okay vendors, but not, uh, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, we do, it, 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 December, December thirty-first.
During our. Yeah, 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 I guess.
And I, I would imagine, Tracy, I don't know if you know this, or whether it's more Jen's thing, but it's, it's probably on a first come, first served basis.
They've, that's.
You get the three applications and.
They've been.
Yeah.
That has been, this has been the same three vendors that have the applications in, uh, for the five and a half years I've been on the board.
That's the, that is probably the one place in Cohasset where a transient vendor can make money, because there's people in a public place who wanna eat something.
Right.
Uh, the common is not packed very often with people, if it is, it's, uh, if, if there is, it's usually an event that's already planned that already has something with it. Uh, and the only other place you have a gathering is, is private locations, South Shore Music Circus and the other, it's, so, uh.
So, a- as much as nobody likes a frozen coffee drink more than I, I, it, this appears to be a, a, a discussion that we need to have more holistically on a future agenda, and this summer's kinda closed out with what we, the, the system we've got in place unless somebody feels otherwise. Board members.
I, I, look, um, my, my view is that, uh, with respect to the request, I think we, we could consider conditionally granting a license for the remainder of the summer, which is two and a half months.
No, not even, six weeks.
Till Labor Day.
Right, till Labor Day. With a, you know, with an outline of a, um, um, what's the word, or scheduling goals, because the Z B A is still the limiting authority, and I don't think any of us are ready to say, well, you know, do you have a tour, give us, let's move ahead.
No, I have a question.
I, 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 hang on one second, I'm gonna, um, and then I, I do wanna recognize, uh, Frank Collins, but my only issue with that is
Right.
then, then we are, all of a sudden, we've granted transient vendor licenses to these three businesses that have been at Sandy Beach for, in perpetuity, whatever, um, and we're now gonna go to them and say, sorry, we've just limited your, your hours.
It's always, it's always been a policy, it's always been a policy, it's never been a bylaw, there's never any God-given grant to any of those.
I understand that, but to all of a sudden go to people that have kind of a habit.
Accumulation of.
Of how they operate and, and literally handing them a schedule, which we would have to implement because there's only been three, and now there's four.
Okay, so.
Let's, think about that, though, have, you, you, you visit Sandy Beach from time to time, I know each of you have, right? Do you ever look and say, well, what's the stay time of the Nona's truck?
It's an hour and a half.
It's an hour and a half, first of all, the truck won't support the refrigeration pretty long enough. Um, and, and the same thing with Dell's, I know Dell's better simply because my daughter used to work on it, and same thing, she, she'd be down for about an hour and a half. I don't know anything about the third vendor. My point is that, you know, it's, it's a bit like hearing, uh, a proponent of a, a heavily used public building here saying, we need to add space, we need to add space, and I said, I can add forty percent of your space, how, expand your hours.
Right.
Right? An hour and a half out of a beach day is a very small slice. I would argue that it, that there is plenty of space to add a coffee vendor next to two frozen treats. So, I, that's, that's my view, and I, I will tell you that I'm ad- admittedly in favor of this because I wanna weight the scale in the favor of a local merchant, someone has taken a piece of, a piece of real estate in this town that frankly has, you know, has every reason to fail because it's so tiny, but yet, he's, this person's said, you know what, I'm gonna make a go of it, I'm gonna make a business, I wanna be part of the community, and this is something I wanna do, and I frankly think that there's, i- i- there's no, there's no good reason that I can think of that we've limited ourselves to three licenses, and if we're going to be, you know, honest with ourselves and we want to promote local business, this is a, a simple way to do it, I believe, from my perspective, that adding one, expanding, if you will, expanding by a third, the total number of licenses out there, and asking for an administration of those licenses is not a lift so heavy that the four or five or less ones that sent you can't actually come up with a way of approving it fairly quickly.
I have a question, though, um, do you have a formal R F P process, or is it just whoever seems to hear about it? I mean, seems to me if, if you self-select somebody who happens to know about it, then it might be half a dozen other folks.
Absolutely.
Who don't have the opportunity, so, it seems to me you need some kind of public R F P process so everybody has a fair chance.
We're.
I.
There is a, there is a larger issue with that, that's true, if, especially if you have a limited resource, um, there, there never has been. It's always been the first come, first served, as a matter of fact, we face this, the very same item with a.
Liquor licenses.
With a liquor license, right, where we have a limitation of three by way of state law, and while that's, uh, you know, a worthwhile consideration, likewise, that's one that frankly needs to be advertised well in advance. We've had a request, we've had a request from a local, a local business, we don't have anything restricting us from changing a policy because a policy can be changed by any board at any time, it's not a bylaw, it's a policy, it's just something that five people, actually, at that time, it was probably three, thought it was a pretty good idea to do, and no one bothered to record the basis of the reasoning for it, all right?
So, I, I just wanna let, um, Kevin and Paul say, if, if they have something to say, then I'm gonna ask Franny to speak, if you, if still interested in that one.
Yeah, yeah, the, the only I would say is that, um, it doesn't look like the beach house is gonna be up and running for food services this summer.
No.
Uh, because it's gonna have to get the zoning, and that's gonna probably take a few months to get the zoning, that's already September, so, it would not necessarily be available. So, what option is to, to potentially open up for one more license transient for the next six weeks, uh, but wouldn't compete against Sandy Beach, it'd be, if it's a local business, it would, off the.
Question, if you do issue one more license, does it set a precedent, now you must have at least four?
No, Robin, we'll get there in a second, no, but I, just, I know, but please don't interrupt the selectmen when he's speaking, thank you.
I, I'm just saying, this seems open to much of this.
Um, so, I think it's, it's reasonable to consider, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm agnostic on this, I think in a way it would be a reasonable to do. You could delay it for the summer and work on it starting September, or we could just say, we're gonna issue one more transient license for six weeks. There's not gonna be a lot of competition, I think you'd probably want, because if you've got s- six weeks, you'll have to set up the, the method to deliver food or services, whatever you're gonna do down there very quickly, and it looks like one of them is ready to go.
Yeah.
Uh, my question is, can we, um, from a legal point of view, do you have, no, can we restrict licenses if we wanted to? Can we, just to a local, uh, or, or, could we set a policy that, uh, we're gonna take your first preference for Cohasset and businesses, and do you happen to know, off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I, I couldn't tell you for sure, but my gut would say no.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, I do believe you do have time, place, and manner restriction, though you can limit locations, I mean, Boston does, I mean, I don't think there's any problem with saying, you can only be on the continent certain hours, and the beach in certain hours, you could do that, I mean, that, you don't want people selling ice cream at three o'clock in the morning, you know, coming down the street ringing their bells, so, there are limits that you can place on hours and all that, and I believe the licenses have some limits on them.
Oh, who, who, well, it's supposed to, for example, we approve three licenses each year.
Yeah.
We can't give preference, and when we do that approval for those particular licenses to Cohasset businesses, I'm just curious.
I, I don't, I don't, I have to ask, I have to ask, I, my, my gut would tell me no, because normally you cannot do that, um.
What do we find out, what do we find out? Restrain of trade or something.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can't, you, I mean, you, I mean, there's no, it's not like a local preference for housing or something. Yeah, you haven't done it, you can't, you haven't, you haven't, it's not like a local preference for housing or something, it'd be a great head honing, though, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Uh I think more likely than not, the the transient vendor would be local, some because of logistics of it, right? Somebody's not traveling from Boston to sell hamburgers down here. Uh it just not, or ice cream even, right? The the transportation time and everything is not likely, it's just like.
I would suggest that when we do the thing in December, we segment, because this is different than like the restaurants of Dry Clean, they're in a set location on Aspen. So that we're fully aware, the public's fully aware that we have a section, it's Sandy Beach, we should promote it that way and we should say we have three licenses open. Come on in, folks, and let everybody apply who wants them and then, you know, we'll have a fair look at.
We'll find out how we.
That's one way of this.
I I I'm gonna say, I I've already talked to our planning director, because Hannah, we're actually head, where you came from, did food trucks. So I've asked him to look into this, so based on what you decide tonight, I'm gonna ask him to do it a little more in depth and come up with some ideas about what we might.
Well, I think that's that that's one of the things that I see as a larger opportunity is
Agree.
is that we we might wanna look at this more holistically as opposed to just, you know, who could show up at Sandy Beach nights? A vendor, a vendor, a business, a local business is asked about that. I have to say that even if we were to go forward with this tonight, it it's still a hurdle for the local vendor. If we were to uh change our policy, approve a a fourth license, first of all, we don't have an application.
Right, that's, yeah.
Secondly, um with the application comes background check. You know, it it it's it's reasonable to expect that it would be, you know, two weeks to start up.
Right.
I'm not throwing that up as a hurdle, but rather rather to recognize that there are some other things to be.
Some some. The health department might expect the whole thing, too.
Right.
The health department, let's expect all the.
Yes, I mean, there's there's there are several steps to go through.
It'll be two couple of weeks, you know what I mean?
Well.
So.
Just a quick reminder.
I what what, I mean, one thing and then Fran, I'll let you speak if you have something to say, but I I to to that point, maybe we could tell the the interested party to file an application. Because why would we act on a policy when we it it's gonna require, you know, to your point about an hour and a half, but what hour and a half? Do we call Dell's and say, you know, you're on two to three thirty on Thursdays and y- I mean, you know what I mean? It's 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 a little more nuanced than just saying, you know, we're gonna put a schedule together because of people's rotations and and their staffing and their experience. So I I think we should probably reach out and say to this person, listen, we can, the board is willing to hear another application and potentially change the policy, which would require, you know, some level of administrative um but and he may just say, listen, I can't pull it together by, you know, July twenty fourth and even if you were to change your policy at that meeting, be ready to roll on August first. It's there's not enough window of time for me to put, why don't we just put it out there if somebody wants to put an application in? We'll address it in the in assuming there's the desire, then we address the policy. Subsequently, we have to have a more wholesome conversation about this, it's it really requires a lot.
Yeah, for it, look, it 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 presents a a potential opportunity for dining options within the town. That is a separate conversation, it's gotta be, I I it it's a it's a separate conversation, probably should be at the very least addressed in another meeting. We have more time. But 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 with the, you know, the planning director involved in it, because I see the success of it every day in Boston. Um but there's an administration there and an infrastructure that we don't currently have and so.
Just one quick point on that is is um and what's what uh the food truck culture in the business has taken off in our society. It's something that there's a lot more, or food trucks are much more acceptable, they're much more high-grade, they're much more varie- uh varied. So us trying to figure out the proper way to make that adjustment for the citizens of Cohasset in one of our iconic sites here really we is appropriate because it's a it's a burgeoning business and we should be flexible enough to accommodate that business.
Or or make a decision with a lot of research that we don't wanna do that.
Yeah, 'cause once again, we're stuck in a structure that is accommodating to the past, life's changed, you know.
My, I grew up with, you know, with mobile for transient food, where and the question was the same, whether you went to one place or the other, do you want hots with that or no? So life has changed quite a bit.
Fran, do you wanna say something? Sorry about that.
Thank I I thank you for letting me jump in and listen, give you some historical perspective and some illumination. Years and years in the old wooden bathhouse, we had food service, very limited food service. We had tonic and we had candy and we had potato chips and peanut butter crackers and and hoodies and chocolate covers. Now, the the Sandy Beach Association, I don't need to do with them, I just go to the beach now and again, they're a nonprofit, they need to make money. And as I understand it, the plan was that they were gonna have some sort of a food service and now where we are talking about taking money away from them, money that they need to keep this beach going, to keep it clean, to pay the lifeguards, to, you know, to make sure things are went well on us, so I really think that you ought to be giving these people the opportunity to go back to what we used to have there and it worked just fine. You know, the biggest change game in my life and I liked in the parking lot was we put the extra two rows of parking in. We moved the we moved the we moved Atlantic Avenue to the west. Now you get food trucks in there that have either generators running or make noise and, you know, ding dong or play that same song, whatever happens to the song of the day over and over again. Taking up valuable parking spaces, we don't have three thousand people anymore, we did seven thousand people, we don't have a whole lot of space at the beach. So do we really need food trucks when Sandy Beach Association can provide whatever needs? Obviously, we're not gonna have fine dining at the beach, it's gonna be snack food. Who 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 better to p- p- provide the snack food than the Sandy Beach Association?
And and this is exactly why it's a bigger conversation, so I think we can move on from for tonight. I I think if somebody is interested and wants to throw an application at us, we can look at it, but I think we need to.
Just to conclude, there's no precedent in them having food service because we had it for years and years and years there.
And that's actually not something that we would probably even get involved
Okay.
other than to say if they got all their permitting through zoning potentially and and order help, we would wanna take into consideration what they're doing in making decisions about transient vendors.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, great, thank you, thanks for having me here.
Let me just, let me just be clear, so I can be clear, so are we ex- are you are you saying that we should accept anyone who's interested in a in doing a conditional summer license and see what happens and come back on the twenty fourth and potentially someone in front of you, is that what, is that the really good word?
That I think we would be inclined to look at an application if one were to come our way and make a decision on whether we wanted to expand for the remainder of the season.
Now, let me see if I can't figure out a way to post this so I can get, and I guess Abigail's sending them to act, so she can hear and put it in the paper.
But but I, well, you know, I mean, here we are, we're in a public meeting, right?
I wait, we we obviously, no, no.
I'm not like looking for a call for it, but we've had somebody.
No, no, I understand that, but we will, we'll reach out, I mean, if you wanna reach out to the owner, but I'll I'll see if we can reach out to him tomorrow.
I'm I am I am gone for the next week, so.
I'll reach out to the owner tomorrow, just let him know that if he's interested, he can apply, he should meet with the board to help first because there is a whole process you have to go through to get.
Right. And it and it it's it's all subject to us changing a policy, but but to me, to spend an additional forty-five minutes figuring out how to create a new policy and then manage it administratively when we don't really have a formal request.
Let 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 me reach out to them and see if there's an interest and it can be an experiment and then at the very least, I, because I, no one has contacted my office about this at all, so.
Well, some someone, th- this person.
No, I know they did and I've I, by the way, I had them do coffee for meetings here before, so, you know, we engaged them and worked with them, so.
Let's see if, let's see if anything comes from it.
Exactly, so, and then we'll let you, I'll let you know next week, specifically.
And then I do think you should ask Pete to do whatever research.
Yeah, we'll talk, the bigger question, I think, off the way to the fall and we'll talk a little bit more beca- and then allow you to tee that up.
Exactly.
And and maybe, you know, the the farmer's market has been very successful, they actually have a taco truck, which is very popular, uh and a pad Thai, that's not
Yeah.
that's not so mobile, I guess they, but that's been very, I actually had some last week, it was very good. Uh they cook it in right in front of you, so it it's an and then then the notice truck and the Dell's lemonade, so it's become like a little uh food court there, so uh plus the vendors.
Right. And we all like the food, it's just a question of what's the right policy in the right places and we know what time.
And that's some of the umbrella of the farmer's market anyway, they're not transit, they're only there for that day, you know, for a minute different.
Yeah.
Right, thank you, thanks everybody.
Thank you all, just one more comment.
Yep.
Uh we the twenty-second of July at five AM, we're going to have a grand opening of the beach house. So all the welcoming will probably read about that in the uh in the Mariner, we'll put some information out.
I appreciate it, thanks, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice evening.
You too, Rob, thanks for hanging around.
So I'm sorry, there are two in the audience and I I don't know who you are, do you need to be recognized or is there some reason?
Chris Flex and Melissa Mendenhall from Seventeen Pleasant Street here in Cohasset. We issued a letter to the town manager copying the board, it's not on the agenda.
Right.
It comes up under the section of not reasonably anticipated, we're happy to answer questions.
So not, so for public comment, it does, it it takes place at the beginning of our meeting, so so we can't take public comment. Um we did receive your letter, um we're uh the town manager's in the process of responding to it. It's not a forty-eight hour issue because that's something that we have to determine as a forty-eight hour emergency action for the board. Um but so two things, you know, you will hear from the the select, uh from the town manager and um and then if you do wanna come to our next meeting on the twenty-fourth, at the beginning of the meeting, which will be posted forty, you know, the Friday prior to the twenty-fourth um and be be heard at selectman comment period, I mean, at public comment period, you please do so, okay?
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
So great, but you will hear from us, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Budget transfers.
Budget transfers, we gotta do that.
So last night, the uh you have the, you all have this sheet that Don prepared, I hope, alright? So um I we went for an advisory committee last night, uh me, I went for an advisory committee last night, uh and they voted unanimously seven to nothing to approve this packet after some conversations. Um the um the the Municipal Modernization Act has allowed, we used to do a lot of these at town meeting and we don't have to do that anymore uh because at the end of the year now, the selectman and the advisory committee can move money, they have to have independent votes. Uh last year we did it together, but this year we couldn't get this the vote on the same night, but um they um have any amount uh between any department. So um uh the the biggest uh adjustments here involve stonex, which is not unexpected, uh that is the biggest single item. Um unfortunately, there've been some like issues with police and fire overtime that have been generated by personnel issues. Um uh that if you remember at the beginning of the year, we had a number of police officers out for a variety of reasons, unfortunately, we now have a couple of opens. We have two vacancies in the department now uh that have been on film, we had three and now we've backfilled one. We're in the process, we have now a permanent intermittent who's now filling some of one of those slots. And the chief of police is working to find another couple of permanent intermittents. Permanent intermittents are, they're staffed, but they're not full, I mean, they're 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 par- they're they're academy trained, but not full-time academy trained and they're available to plug in uh as a regular officer in a lower rate of pay, uh and basically have an ability to to kind of test them out. And then if they work out, you can potentially you bring them on as a full-time police officer. Um the challenge with hiring someone off a list uh is that you get them and they may not be trained at all. And then you have to put them through the academy and then six months later they come back to you and you have six months to evaluate them, so. Um i- i- the fire's a little different, we've also been unfortunately short, a couple of, we're now short two positions, one that's been out on injury and another one that for a transfer. Uh and then we had a unfortunately, unfortunate incident of events, fortunately, none of them got the job, we had three people out. Uh well, actually, one was a caller for military duty, uh fortunately, it was only a short duration. Two others were hurt at home doing, you know, personal things. So they were down five people at one point, which was a whole shift, a whole lot, whole lot, so um they're they're they were overtime, unfortunately. And fire have been doing very well, spiked at the very end of the year and police did as well. So Chief Quigley and Don, the finance director and I will be meeting, but Don gets back, was honey, wanna talk more about police overtime and things we have to do to address some of that? And with fi- and both of police and fire were actively working to fill these vacant positions. Um so we will not have this a problem with. Uh does anyone have any other questions about any of the other expenses?
So these are monies that are, and we're even.
They're already, they're already in the budget, they're just moving from one place to another.
So you go from extra in one bucket going to a deficit.
Correct.
So it's transfer of monies that already appropriated as a matter of filling in the.
Correct, just moving them from one account to another, because we're not, we're not allowed
Yeah.
to do that independently, the schools, as you know, the school committee can do that for anything. Um and again, so one of the other things that that you, there's a lot of little ones in here. We have the raise, we have raised money that's stuck in the the tat, just for the sake of convenience, for the whole for the whole town, in the town manager budget. We normally would have made a bunch of those transfers in the fall, we didn't, Don was new, we didn't do those transfers, so we're not doing them now. So in this, in the next cycle, we'll be making transfers, providing we have some contract settlements um in the fall of the special tab meeting as opposed to waiting until the end of the year to catch up. So some of these are, some of the smaller ones involve uh changes in salaries and things that we're just catching up with at the end of the year. That the money was already there, it just wasn't in the department.
Capital fund transfer or capital fund debt?
Uh.
I mean, that's that's something we should know.
Yeah, and it 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 this was just a, when Mary did some numbers, she left something off that at last year. It was a ti- it was a bit of interest that on something that had just been reset, so there's also a little savings uh at the bottom, so it's partially. Yeah, it should be noted, this was a, this had to do with something that was set at the end of the year and just got.
Yeah.
So it 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 should, it it shouldn't have been missed, it was minor, it won't happen again.
So.
So um is there a motion for um FY eighteen year-end transfers, that's four hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents in and out of various budget line items as presented?
Uh so moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sure you and Tom, you anticipate this discussion.
Very quick, we're almost done.
So I'm gonna give you a very, very quick update on uh town hall in general. Uh the executive summary that has been promised by our architects is still in production, I'm hoping to have it in the can in the next couple of weeks, I should have a better answer shortly. I have not had, I have not been in contact with my, no, our engineering engineers. Um staff is also independently compiling and going through all the existing reports, so extract key information on renovations that have been asked about, uh to pull those out. Uh we also have an estimate for a company to come in and do a more in-depth just on red, you know, what systems and what things might have to be done. Um and I uh if that's the will of, it's not terribly expensive, we have the money to do it, it's a, the current estimate is, I think, for a little less than ten thousand dollars. I've been committed to uh, based, again, they don't have to, you know, go behind the walls on everything, it's it's more of a look at what exists. The ages of the systems and do some walk around the building and look at the studies that have already been done to be able to come up with some hard numbers.
So from that, will we get what we call, what we asked for, last time we discussed this, which is essentially the base case, the very, you know, just so that we can have that to compare again. So from that report, we'll have the base case for this building here, is that correct?
It it would be a a more in-depth look at the various components as opposed to the building as a whole. I mean, again, it's it's not about the functionality of the building, it's about the systems piece.
Right.
Yeah, painting, electrical.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, plumbing, electrical, uh HVAC, you know.
Stuff that has to be remediated.
What about, what about the structure itself?
Uh the structure itself, um.
Is that gonna be evaluated?
Well, yeah, the roof, well, the roof and things like that, not not its usability in the sense of its layout, you know, that that would.
No, 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 that's what I'm talking.
Yeah, no, 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 roof.
Roof, the structural integrity of the situation, that's what I'm talking about.
Roof walls. Um m- m- more components from the sense of, I I there's 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 been an indication of buildings crumbling, okay, I mean, they're physically, you know, um.
Chappelle roof.
I mean, well, the the roof passes useful life, the windows are passing useful life, things like that, I mean, all those building systems, not from a, I don't, I don't think they're gonna go behind the wall, but I think there's already been some assessments done of the of the bones of the building already, so. Um we are, so if 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 that's something that you'd like me to do, I'll authorize us to go forward, I would do have money available.
Aye.
But I wanted to make sure that that was a directive of the board, so.
I I mean, I think that's what we want, we want as much information as we can and I know we're getting the architect's executive summary at some point.
That's what we're asking for, yeah, okay. Right, so.
And at that point, when we have all that, then we decide.
This is a more, this is more at a five thousand foot level than a thirty thousand foot level that we've had. Uh we've also had a look at the electrical system and the air quality issue, uh those are being, that's, those are assessments that are already set clearly in the way. Um in addition, you know, we're still searching for funding. Uh so I've I've gotten comments back on our cultural council grant, which we unfortunately did not win, but the comments that I got back were actually pretty positive. There were a lot of very positives in the response. The single biggest piece that was missing was, what are you gonna use the new bill, uh the renovated Ontario for, be more specific? We really weren't more specific because we didn't have all, we didn't have concrete partners, you know, for use. So I think that was probably based on my, I have not talked to their director, but I've, he said with the comments, that seems to be the biggest single thing that could be addressed. Because they were very positive on the town's ability to do the project, a good architect, you know, uh good history, you know, but we weren't specific with the uses and and how much it would change. I mean, we're going from very little to to potentially a lot more, but we didn't. Uh in addition, um um because Paul and I are meeting with Senator Conso, I was talking about the state grant.
He's.
And see how we might be able to go after that, so uh so that's, so those are, that's it, that's my quick update.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other town manager update?
Um, just one, so the MVP follow-up, May, uh, July seventeenth, a week from tonight, um, at the senior center, I'm almost certain, I think it's at seven o'clock, but, uh, you may wanna just check the website, 'cause I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
That's gonna be a posted meeting?
It will be posted, there will be ice cream, no dinner this time, it'll be ice cream Sundays to entice people to come, so if you came and wanna hear the report, that's great, even if you didn't come and you wanna hear the report, please come, um, so a week from tonight, at the senior center.
Oh, definitely.
A lot of time to that license.
Who's sponsoring that meeting, the, the town?
That's the town, it's the town, M A P C, uh, Peter and Michelle will continue to run it, Peter Magico, Tom Pyne, Michelle, who's been working on it, and then the report will be presented that they did, based on the, the two nights, which has already been certified by the state, but, but, it's certified, the state has accepted that it's a legitimate, that we're now in a, we, we now have the avail- we now have the ability to go after a pool of five million dollars, I think that the individual recipients may be capped, but, uh, there's a pool of five million dollars now open MVP communities, the state just, is up, is, is just announced.
Yeah, I think he says just over sixty, means calories that are in the market.
Yeah, so we're in the first, we're in the first pool of people available, I think.
What, is that Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday?
It's, it's, it's a nice week from tonight, it's Tuesday the seventeenth, uh, and I will also be on the website and hopefully on Facebook, but it's, it's, um, it's at the senior center, but double check the calendar on, on the town website for more information, that's my update.
Tuesday, seventeen, yep. All right, quick selectman update, Kevin?
Uh, no, I'm fine.
No pressure, well.
Um, two quick things, one, the, um, the, I got a, ran into a, there's a couple that were just here, in regards to the Smith Place and the culvert, um, and I think the big concern is that the current, uh, Smith Place renovation and building project, there's a culvert the town has, I, I don't know whether, I think, I know they own it, but it runs
James Brook.
pretty much the, the outflow of, of James Brook from just before through this basic parking lot and portion to the end of it, I think it's about a hundred and fifty feet, maybe?
No, it goes all the way to James Lane, all the way to the.
Oh, so it's even longer.
It was all under the parking lot, right, right through the, the gas station, it comes out, right behind Charlie Humphrey's, all the way around.
So, it goes the full length of the town.
Yes.
Um, yeah, my concern is that they had a tractor down there, this is a few months ago, and I specifically spoke to the contractors, they do not put anything heavy on this, because I was concerned, it's, it's time-wise, I, you know, at least nineteen, twenty, maybe earlier, I don't know what the, the time it was, but certainly it's been there a long time, it's concrete, I'm not sure if it's reinforced concrete, but it, it's an absolute necessity to have that intact and open, because if that collapses, it's gonna flood all the way back.
Flood the neighborhood, is that correct?
It's a.
It'll flood the neighborhood.
Oh, flood the neighborhood, it'll, it'll flood back to Sawyer Street, it'll, it'll flood up and push back James Brook all the way back.
I, I don't wanna shut you off, but especially because I dismissed them and, you know, gave them the.
Yeah, well, but I'm just, I'm just giving you some background of what I ran into, so I'd like to see if, um, if, Chris, you can just make sure that they, that the, the town's aware of any large vehicles wandering over this culvert.
I know.
I went down in there and it's, it's all, I don't know, it's all strong.
Still Roman aqueducts working, so we gotta keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
And, and, and so maybe, you know, given, it's probably something we should have an update on in general about this project since clearly.
Yeah. Yeah, I did talk to, I did talk to our planner a little bit today, and I'll have more information, just so, I, I believe that, by the way, just, just so people are aware, I believe that the next public meeting on this from a planning representative is not until August now, so there's, there's still, like, 'cause they have, they, there, there's, there's apparently a new proposal that will be filed, that has not been filed, at least not completely filed, so the next public hearing will not be until September, August, as I.
I guess my concern is if.
And then what, by the way, it's being watched.
If they're playing around with large tractors that crushes it.
Right, it's, it's, no, it's been, it, it, it's damaged by anybody that operates it.
'Cause it'll flood the rail, it'll, it'll flood Sawyer, it'll flood.
I'm, I'm crossing my fingers, crossing, okay, but it's being watched, I appreciate that, but.
And the other thing is the, um, the meeting tomorrow with, um, Senator Connor and Gene, uh, or, you know, um, there's three million dollars that the governor has access to for dispersing for town hall renovation project, it's in there, it's been approved, it's a matter of, uh, showing our project, saying that's a reasonable project. If we get the money, I, I think this would be a, a game changer on the final decision of what we can do for town hall, so, that'll be our, our challenge, I'll, I'll, to that, uh, next step, we'll go over to the governor's office, and their accountable budget, um, committee, that's it, that's all I have.
Okay. Steve?
Um, I had a couple of calls that came in, uh, asking about the, the now missing house on the common, does anyone have any information on this?
Uh, I can, I can tell you that, uh, as I understand it, um, the house was purchased, um, the owners, after you made a petition to the Cohasid Common Historic District pursuant to the buy-along, um, to, um, replace it. Uh, there were hearings, they took, that took place, um, there were, uh, and I, again, I wasn't in any of them, okay, so, uh, this was off my radar screen entirely, um, the hearings took place, um, the, um, the Cohasid, the commission approved them, replacing the house, uh, in its entirety, um, with very strict guidelines of what could go back, um, and, uh, and apparently from, I, again, I don't have all the details, but what I've been told, talking to a few folks on the commission, um, it, it was in pretty bad shape, and, uh, and the decision was made, it made more sense to replace it with something that was historical looking than have something that was literally falling down.
No, I, I, I appreciate the background, I didn't know anything about it, and that's why I.
Till you did, like the rest of us.
Well, I didn't either, I, I didn't either, and, and I did say to several members of this, you know, that the lack, I mean, it, it, it wasn't, there was any intention to hide anything, it just wasn't very well publicized.
Yeah, but, so. No, it's, 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 it's actually one of the, the ironies of our time, we have vast amounts of communication capacity at our hands, but we have no commonality by the way we use it, so, um, you, you can, you can hide a lot of things in plain sight because of that, so, thank you very much, that's what I, that's what I needed to know, it's, it went through the governing process, the governing process, uh, allowed for this to take place with restrictions on its reconstruction.
Yeah, and, and there is, there are plans, everyone wants to see the thing, but I don't look at them, I have not seen them, but I'm told it was fairly intense conversation, and that what's being restored has to look pretty authentic, so.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you.
On that, it just really quickly, the, the people that I spoke to about this, I used it as an opportunity to encourage them to go to master plan public meetings and other such things, so that they can actually weigh in on some of the, some of the values of the community and, and how they might get addressed, um, in the future, so, um, I have nothing else, um, we have two sets of minutes, the minutes from June twelfth and June nineteenth, is there a motion or approval?
Sue.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
You got it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I adjourn, thank you.
While you recover, you finished.